Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular commission meeting this Tuesday, August the 12th of the Delray Beach City Commission. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Commissioner Markert.
Here.
Vice Mayor Long.
Here.
Commissioner Cassell.
Here.
Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Here.
Mayor Carney.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you could all rise, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, while you may be seated. Agenda approval. If there's anyone, any items on the agenda?
Could I grab two for a quick question? I should have grabbed two items off the agenda I and L, please. Six I and six L for just a quick question. Sorry. Thank you.
I'd like to do six C, if we could pull that.
C.
So we've got six I and six L, and you were saying which one?
C.
C.
Six C? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a suggestion, and if I can, please.
Sure.
And that has to do with the presentation section. We have four A and four B. Four B is the annual State of Florida Legislative Session Report from Matt Forrest.
Yes.
Of course, we have the 100-year anniversary for Ebenezer Wesleyan Methodist Church. You all just took the photo in recognition thereof.
Yes.
Perhaps that can be read as the second item as opposed to the third, for a more efficient flow of the meeting.
So that we'll do, so we'll move the legislative session to four C?
That would be my recommendation, yes, sir.
And as for the other items, we're gonna make six I, seven AA. We're gonna make six L, seven BB. And we're gonna make six C, seven CC. Is that, everybody got that?
Yes, thank you.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Circle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. We have now our presentations. First one is a resolution, a resolution, this is a special one, for 122-25, Dawn English for 30 years' worth of service. Let me read the resolution. The resolution, I'm sorry. Hi, Dawn. "A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, recognizing and commending Dawn English for 30 years of service to the City of Delray Beach. Whereas Dawn English began her career with the City of Delray Beach on June 5th, 1995, and on June 5th, 2025, reached a milestone in her career having achieved 30 years of full-time service with the city. And whereas Dawn was hired as a communications specialist, was promoted to police information supervisor, then to administrative program coordinator, then to police accreditation manager in 2019. She was promoted again in 2020 forward to data analyst and accreditation manager of the Delray Fire Department, where she currently serves with distinction. And whereas, as a supervisor, Dawn was known for leading and supporting her team in providing professional, kind, and empathetic service to the police department front desk customers. This position required extensive knowledge of the Uniform Crime Reporting Program, as well as many other statutes such as the Florida Public Records Law. And whereas Dawn successfully leads several biannual reaccreditation campaigns during her tenure as policy accreditation manager. Due to her excellent reputation in the professional community, Dawn was also selected to participate in several mock assessments in other law enforcement agencies. And whereas Dawn, due to her demonstrative expertise, Dawn was selected to move to the fire department, a fire rescue department, to contribute to that department's 2025 reaccredited, a reaccreditation effort. Last month, the department received its CFAI accreditation, which acknowledges their success in achieving the highest standards in fire and emergency services. And whereas there are numerous recommendations in Dawn's files for her outstanding expertise in her field, her critical thinking skills, attention to detail, and her many contributions to the City of Delray Beach. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach as follows. One, that the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach hereby recognizes and commends Dawn English for 30 years of dedicated and faithful public service. Two, that the City Commission hereby congratulate and express sincere thanks and appreciation to Dawn English for her many years of service, and wish her the best of health and happiness in her continued employment. Congratulations, Dawn."
May I, Commissioners, dot bash human resources. I'm honored to be here to present Dawn's plaque and her resolution, but I'm going to offer an opportunity for Fire Department and Police Department to say a few words.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Travis Franco, Deputy Fire Chief, Delray Fire Rescue. Through Dawn's 30 years of service, she spent about a year and a half with the Fire Department. The last six months, I've been able to work very closely with her. Although she's only been with the Fire Department for a short period of time, she's made a tremendous impact, as the mayor alluded to in the resolution reading. Without her, we don't get reaccredited, plain and simple. She came in and through a Herculean effort, got us on track, and got us done, and got us reaccredited, which is, there's only a handful of departments in the whole country who possess that. So that's a testament to Dawn. Personally, I enjoy working with her every single day. She's a consummate professional. She's a wealth of institutional knowledge. And she's somebody that everyone in the Fire Department has come to lean on as a pillar of strength within our organization. So we're very, very fortunate and lucky to have her. Dawn, job well done.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Assistant Chief Rodney Stevenson with the Police Department. I think I should just hand my paper to you, because I think you said everything I was gonna say in my little speech here.
I appreciate it. It's helped me out a lot.
Thank you all for being here tonight, as we take a moment to recognize someone who's reached an incredible milestone. 30 years of service to the City of Delray Beach and our community. Tonight, we honor, we are here to honor former U.S. Marine Dawn Elizabeth English. A person whose dedication, integrity, quiet strength have made a lasting impact within the Delray Beach Police Department. 30 years is not just a number. It represents decades of commitment, sacrifices, hard work, and countless contributions. Dawn began her career on June 5th, 1995, stepping into a role that is a cornerstone for the Police Department, a communications specialist. Over the years, Dawn has worn many different hats, tackled many challenges, and supported generations of police officers and members of our professional staff. Whether it was dispatching calls for service as a communications specialist, managing the day-to-day operations of record management as a pen supervisor, helping streamline policies and procedures as administrative program coordinator, are leading the way for the Delray Beach Police Department to achieve its first-ever Excelsior status through accreditation as the accreditation manager. Dawn has always gone above and beyond her regular duties. What is truly remarkable is just not the length of her service, but the way in which she served. With professionalism, humility, and a genuine commitment to excellence. She always has been the person that shows up early, stays late, mentors others, and never sought the spotlight. But today, you absolutely deserve it. On behalf of the Delray Beach Police Department and the Delray Beach Fire Rescue, we'd like to say congratulations on your 30 years of service. Thank you for your hard work, dedication, and loyalty, and we are honored to say that we have worked alongside you. Thank you.
Do you have the certificate there?
Yes. Dawn, we're honored to present you with your 30-year plaque.
Thank you.
And a copy of the resolution that was just read into the record.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your service. I am now gonna, I'm now gonna turn, I thought you were getting up to say something. Sorry, Mr. Barron. I'm now gonna turn this over to the Deputy Vice Mayor Burns. The next item is gonna be the recognition of the 100-year anniversary for the Ebenezer Wesleyan Methodist Church. Commissioner Burns.
Oh, thank you. Okay. We want to just say congratulations to Ebenezer Wesleyan Methodist Church for celebrating 100-year anniversary here in the City of Delray Beach. We have already taken our picture, and we have their plaque here. Congratulations for the years of service to our community. So thank you, Wesley. And they have their celebratory service on the next Sunday, I think it is?
August 24th.
August 24th, and then they will also have a luncheon in celebration. So, what's that?
Why don't you go down and present the plaque?
I will. Okay.
If you would all come up, Deputy Vice Mayor's coming down for a photo op?
I'm being directed by the mayor to go down and give them their plaque. I wanted to hold on to it.
On behalf of the City of Delray Beach, congratulations.
Is this charging? It's very slow. Okay. Thank you very much. Now, this is the report on the 2025 State of Florida Legislative Session from Mr. Matt Forrest of Ballard Partners. There you are, Matt. How are you today?
Great. Hello, everyone. For the record, Matt Forrest with Ballard Partners, representing the City of Delray Beach. It's a pleasure to be here today. If I wasn't here, I'd still be in Tallahassee. So it's always nice when I get a chance to come down here and see you guys face to face. Before I begin, I always like to remind you that I know you, as all know me, I've represented the city for many, many years. But I want to always remind you, you have my entire firm that works for you. Ballard Partners is a statewide firm, national firm now. We have a large presence in Washington, D.C., of course. And of course, a large presence in the state of Florida, headquartered in Tallahassee, Florida. We've had our operation here in West Palm Beach since 2007. And so I know I am your face. I'm the one that you talk to the most. But I always want to remind you that you have the full force of the entire firm behind you, including Brian Ballard himself. And the City of Delray Beach is definitely one of a handful of cities that we've represented for a long, long time, and we like the special relationship we have with you guys. So always like to remind you guys from that, from the start, it's always not just me. You have the entire firm at our disposal. It was a long season in Tallahassee. The session and the committee weeks began in December of 2024, is when the first committee week started after the general election. Committee weeks ran through February. The session was from March into June. Normally, the session, as you, I'm sure are well aware, is usually 60 days. This year, because of extended sessions, the session was 105 days long and concluded in around the middle of June, and the governor eventually acted on the budget, literally the last day he could before going into effect until I won. So it was a very long season in Tallahassee with a lot of bills and a lot of things under consideration. The City Commission, as I say every time I come down to see you, this setting is a horrible setting for a deep dive into legislation in Tallahassee. We would derail the entire meeting with what does this word mean? What does that comma mean? What does this bill do? What was that bad bill that didn't pass? What did it do? And why did they run it? So instead of diving into all of that, there is a, what I even consider, hopefully, a condensed report, which is roughly 39 pages, that I've included to the city. Peruse that at your convenience. If there's any issues or topics or bills you'd like a deeper dive into, there's a benefit to me being just up the road in West Palm Beach. We can come down, we can meet, we can talk about it, and have a deeper dive into any of those bills. Because even that, 39 pages, is an overview, okay? But with that said, I will give you some kind of big picture, you know, highlights, or maybe not so great highlights for the session, and also give you an idea of where we think that are going forward. There was 1,989 bills filed for consideration in this session. So a lot of bills in play, a lot of things in discussion. And as much as some, most of the bad stuff didn't pass, a few things did get through that are gonna impact the city. I have kind of grouped what I think are some general themes that we continue to see in Tallahassee that I think are important for you to be aware of. One is what I call Florida affordability. There's a constant discussion in Tallahassee on how affordable is it to be a Floridian? And there's two kind of big numbers that obviously jump out right away to Florida affordability, and that's issues regarding property insurance and property taxes. These are reoccurring themes in Tallahassee that are not gonna go away. They are gonna be another theme going into the next session, which we'll talk about here at the end. But property insurance and property taxes are definitely a thing that are gonna be on the agenda in Tallahassee. Another issue that continues to have litigation, or have bills relating to them, is what I call business versus litigation. This is the constant struggle between trial attorneys and business interests. This year, there was a really significant bill regarding medical malpractice that doesn't necessarily impact local governments. However, it is in that kind of, that wheelhouse of, again, business interests, the medical interests, and the trial attorneys. The bill actually passed, but it was eventually vetoed by the governor. Another bill, though, that didn't pass, that in that same category would have impacted local governments, and that was regarding sovereign immunity. Raising the caps of what governments are required to pay in their sovereign immunity cap. I'll get into that bill in a minute, but that bill did not pass. So it did not make it to the governor, and it's gonna be around again and again. So those issues continue to play out. Another theme that's, that we got a lot of attention this past session in Tallahassee, and it's one of the reasons the session went 105 days, is state spending. The current majority in Tallahassee, mostly especially in the House, believe that the state has a spending problem. They believe, even though they're fiercely conservatives, as a majority, the spending for the state has gone up and up every single year, which is why this year, eventually, they did cut the budget and looked at all different spending. So as much as you're gonna hear from down the way and other issues I'll talk about regarding local government spending, even the state, the state is looking at how they are spending their money, and that's definitely a theme going forward. Lastly, the big tranche of bills that cover a category that obviously is no surprise to you, and definitely no surprise to your staff, there is always another constant batch of bills regarding local governments. Local government regulations, dealing with most notably, local government comprehensive plans and planning, and how the development works within local governments. I see no shortage of bills this year on the topic. I see no shortage of bills like that coming up in the future. It's gonna be a constant thing playing out. So those are kind of the big themes that we saw this session, and I think they'll continue to play out. One thing that's always important, I think, when we go to Tallahassee, is, you know, I'm definitely your voice up there, and I advocate for the bills that you support, and I advocate against the bills that you oppose. But I also try to draw down dollars from the state. We work very closely with your staff, with your city manager, and assistant city manager, and many members on your staff, to see if there's any projects that are important to the City of Delray Beach that also fit what are the priorities for the state of Florida. This year, I was happy to say, we filed four projects that we worked with your staff to come up with. They were both sponsored by Senator Lori Berman and Representative Peggy Goss Seidman. And out of those four projects, I'm happy to say, two of them, we were able to get into the budget, and most importantly, hold on to in the budget, and survive even the veto pen. So I'm proud to say that today, we'll be drawing down $1.5 million from the state of Florida back to the City of Delray Beach. We got $525,000 to go towards a real-time crime center, Phase 2, and we got $1 million to go towards the Gulf Stream Boulevard slash 36th Street Avenue streetscape improvement. So I stress that this is a great thing to always, you know, if you can draw down state dollars, that are projects you're already probably doing, already working towards. That's the best way to go about looking to draw down dollars from the state. For those of you that are sports fans, like I am, I consider it, go into the plate. You know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna bat a thousand. But I'm proud to say, for the City of Delray Beach, we continue to draw down more dollars than it costs to send me up there. So it's another good win for the state, for the City of Delray Beach this year. I'm not gonna cover just a few bills that did not pass. This is the topic I think some people always forget, because they tend to dwell on the bad things that did get through. And, you know, I'm definitely a glasses-half-full kind of guy. It could have been worse. There could have been some other bad things that made it through. So here's some ideas. Not only do I tell you this to give you some perspective, to realize that not everything is, you know, not everything up there is getting through, but also to give you an idea, these things usually tend to stick around. So bills that didn't pass this past session, even though they must get refouled again, they must go through the entire process again, there's a good chance we'll see them again. And a lot of these fit into those themes I talked about earlier. One was SB 996 relating to revenues from ad valorem taxes. This bill capped a local government's ability to levy a millage above 102% of the rollback. So it did not pass, didn't get a lot of traction, but again, it was legislation that was gonna put handcuffs on what local governments could do with your millage rates. Another one that I know a lot of cities were looking at was the Affordable Housing Bill, HB 247. This would have mandated local governments permit ancillary dwelling units in single-family residential areas without any increased requirements, including parking. One that's been around many years, and I guarantee you'll be back around again, HB 503, local business taxes. This bill eliminated a local government's ability to levy any local business tax, any local business receipt, any kind of registration system you have for businesses. This bill's been around for a long time. I know the sponsor well. It's not going to go away. It's going to be around. So this is one of those things, I think, we need to keep that on the radar here in Delray Beach. Opposition is oftentimes eventually not a great strategy. There's gonna be ways to make sure that if it is to go away, it doesn't impact the City of Delray Beach as significantly. Another bill I hinted at earlier that did not pass, HB 301, suits against government. This is the bill regarding sovereign immunity. Again, it's been around many, many years. I don't think it's a matter of if, it's a matter of when this will eventually pass. It's very similar to, I like to think of it like minimum wage. Eventually, it is going to go up. Right now, the caps are at $200,000 for a local government, for an individual case, $300,000 for a group case. They haven't been raised in over a decade. The bill has been all over the place, but at one point, the bill had the new numbers at $1.1 million for an individual case, and $3.2 million for a group case. So to give you perspective on what that means is, without going to trial, a trial attorney could come to you and say, look, instead of, you know, paying out this case, you're gonna be on the hook for at least $1.1 million for, you know, every slip and fall in a park that they come across. And so definitely could impact your budget significantly if it goes up. So, but at the same time, be ready. It's going, the numbers are gonna go at some point increase. Lastly is HB 665, local government impact fees. This bill removed the local government's ability to mandate any art-related requirements as a condition for processing development permits and orders. And I do know, similar to the art, but there's other conditions you like to put in certain local governments or certain developments, especially in your downtown area. If you're gonna do certain things, we want you to improve the area. This would have tied your hands on that. Those are all the bills that didn't pass. So be ready, they could be back. Here's a couple of things, like I said, that did creep through that your staff, I know, are already aware of and are already working towards. Because the other thing to always remember is rarely does a bill only impact the City of Delray Beach. It impacts every local government. The one that's on the hotbed topic for everybody right now is Senate Bill 180 relating to emergencies. So even though the bill is related to emergencies, and that was the intent of the bill, it was filed by members from Sarasota County and Pinellas in response to Hurricanes Debbie, Helene, and Milton that hit. There is language in the bill that actually restricts a local government's ability to increase, let me get the wording right, anything more restrictive or burdensome concerning review, approval, or issuance of a site plan development permit or development order after any, any local governments impacted by these storms, which a couple did come through here. So there's a lot of question over what is more restrictive or burdensome. There's also a question of exactly what part of the statute does that apply to, and does that apply only to the hurricane-damaged areas? Or does it apply to every local government? So I do know this is a very highly contested bill with all local governments right now. I also think we will see legislation, whether it passes or not, I don't know. I do think we'll see other cities, in the League of Cities, and other folks trying to find a medium ground. The goal here is so that local governments aren't moving the goalposts for people who have property damage in a hurricane. At the same time, we also don't want to unintentionally freeze all local governments in the state of Florida from doing any new comprehensive plans, simply because they were within 100 miles of a hurricane, because as we know in Florida, we're probably always within 100 miles of a hurricane making landfall every single year. So I do think that bill will be addressed later on. Another bill that passed that actually might be, you might want to take advantage of, 268 Public Records for Public Officers. This is a new expansion of public records exemptions that can allow you This is a new expansion of public records exemptions that can allow you to remove your personal addresses and home information, including spouses and adult children, phone numbers from certain public records requests. Also, SB four sixty-two, again, I live right up the road from you guys. I live right up and frequent runs along A one A and Atlantic Avenue, and I know the frequency of electric bikes and scooters that I have seen, so maybe you guys have as well. There is legislation now, SB four sixty-two, the transportation bill, allows a local government to regulate minimum age requirements, require IDs, or training regarding electric bicycles, motorized scooters, and micro mobility devices. So I do know we've seen an increase of those. There is a new tweak on those things. Lastly, as you probably are aware, if you're not, I know it may not impact you as a provider, but maybe as a consumer, SB seven hundred prohibited the addition of medicine in the public drinking water system, which of course is fluoride. That was another significant bill to local governments. That covers the big bills, highlights and pros, and you'll notice I've already eaten up a lot of your clock. Let me touch on two broader areas that I know everybody is talking about, and then I'll answer any questions you may have. There's a lot of buzz, obviously, with property taxes. It was a big discussion this year. The governor has been very forthcoming in saying he would like to find a way to reduce property taxes. The legislature does not have the tool in their toolbox to do it just by themselves. They have to propose an amendment to the Constitution. There is discussion that they will be proposing that and doing that at the next session. So there's already a working group in the Florida House. The Senate does not have one, and they will be putting together some sort of package probably in order for the voters to vote on that. What it looks like, nobody knows at this point. I will say, actually, I literally just read an article before I came in here, where the Senate President, Senate President Albritton, who represents mostly rural areas, is telling all of his local governments to, quote, "Just breathe, just breathe." Everybody is well aware that all local government revenue comes from property taxes. They do know that this supports not only public safety, but everything that you do comes through somehow the property taxes, especially smaller and rural and fiscally constrained counties. So they will have that in mind when they go into it. At the same time, they all are aware, though, too, that seems like property taxes seem to be the one number that goes up and up and up every single year for all Floridians. So that topic will be definitely discussed, and we'll see what comes forward when they put forward in the next session. The other issue is, I'm sure you're also aware of it, it's on all the headlines, is the Department of Government Efficiency, DOGE. Florida does have an active DOGE department now. The CFO's office for the state of Florida, the Chief Financial Officer, is doing audits and inspections of numerous local governments, numerous counties. Right now, I think he's in Hillsborough. You read in the Palm Beach Post, he'll be also doing Palm Beach County. It's probably not a matter, again, of if, it's probably a matter of when. They'll be looking at as many local governments for spending and as much as they can. Again, to make the argument, if there is a way to roll back property taxes, maybe there's a way to also make sure that local governments are running as efficiently as they possibly can. So as always, as you guys have always been told, and as you guys know, every penny needs to be accounted for, every penny they'll be looking to make sure is being used for the best interest, not only of Delray Beach, but the state of Florida. And they're holding themselves, I think, as much as they can to that degree as well. Like I said, they cut four billion dollars from the state budget this year. Getting money in the budget was more difficult than it's ever been before of really justifying exactly what it's going towards. So not only is it tighter, tighter in the budget world in Tallahassee, they're looking to make those same restrictions at the local level. The next session starts up early. As much as it was a long session, we get a quick break. The committee weeks will begin in October. They'll run October, November, December. There'll be a little break for the holidays. The next session starts at the beginning of January and runs, hopefully, just through March, barring any extended session. So we'll be back up there in no time, going back at it again. Palm Beach County Day, for those of you that are interested in going Palm Beach County Day, we don't have any details on that yet, but again, it'll be early January, probably about the second or third week in January. There just now, we're starting to release deadlines and dates and new forms for the 2026 session. So probably in the next two weeks, I'll be getting a memo to your staff with key dates and forms and how we progress into the next session. And with that, I will answer any questions and just always remind you, I'm right up the road. If you ever want to have a, you know, take advantage while the fact that I'm here in town for the next two months, I'm more than happy to come down and see you one-on-one. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Forrest. Commissioner Long.
Thank you very much, Matt. Really appreciate it. I actually just wanted to ask about SB one eighty, again, you already, like, touched on it. We're going to be talking about that later a little bit. And we also, we have our Historic Conservation District, which I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it adds in some zoning restrictions. While we work on that policy, we have a zoning in progress. And me and Lynn were talking about that earlier, and I wanted to get your opinion on if this is, just given some of the sweeping preemptive language in it, like the, you know, the prohibition against any more restrictive or burdensome land use and zoning regulations. Just wondering how that could impact our ability to sort of stay on track with that conservation district plan that we have, or if we're going to have to sort of stall on it till some of these things get worked out? Because I guess we are joining in class action to fight this. We'll be voting on that in the consent agenda. But I just, since we're voting on both things tonight, I figured since we have the benefit of having you here, would love to get your insight on that.
So I can't give you opinion or advice, or definitely state how it impacts you. You have excellent representation, and I know also you're planning and zoning staff are very, very adept at reading the bill and knowing how it impacts your current code. I would always just remind all the clients, you know, the, read the letter of the bill specifically, and where there's any gray area or interpretation, that's where there's always room for the legal community to opine on what that means.
Yeah.
And you're fully entitled to define, you know, to have your opinion. That's your choice then, if you want to defend that opinion, you know, if ever challenged. But at the end of the day, it's your opinion as to how it impacts your code. Does that make sense? And I'd also go back to, again, it never actually states in the bill, what does more restrictive or burdensome mean?
Right.
So again, I would also say, until somebody comes and challenges you to say that this is more restrictive and more burdensome, it is not, you know, until it's proven that it is. And then also, you know, just, you know, it also gets very specific on to exactly which parts regarding a more restrictive or burdensome procedure concerning review, approval, or issuance of a site plan, development permit, or development order. Again, I would stick with the verbs, you know, procedure concerning review, approval, issuance of a site plan. You know, other areas like regarding, you know, creating a historic district may not necessarily interfere with review, approval, or issuance. Does that make sense?
Yep, yeah. And do you see other cities reacting to this strongly at this point?
Every city and local government in the state of Florida is reacting to it.
That's what I've been sensing. There's a lot of panic around it. That's why I wanted to get your sort of more nuanced insight into.
Yeah, it's impacting everyone. And also tell you, this was not a debated bill in Tallahassee. This, I want to say it had maybe one or two no votes in the entire session. It was, there was a big kumbaya moment on the floor when it passed, bipartisan support. Again, the, let's not forget, the state was rocked, especially the Gulf Coast, by three hurricanes last year.
Yeah.
They are dealing with a significant issue in terms of, you know, when a home is destroyed, how do you rebuild it? But at the same time, maybe, you know, it needs to be rebuilt at the modern code. And so, you know, now you get into property rights of, no, I want to rebuild my house. Well, there's a reason it was destroyed. It's sitting way too far close to the shore. It's not high enough anymore. It's not built to this or that. And so there's always that issue of, you know, local government at the same time. So there's a lot of reasons why the bill needed to be there. Certain local governments were moving the goalposts on property owners. But now you can see sometimes, everything in Tallahassee, the metaphor I use is a pendulum. A lot of times, it looks like the pendulum might have swung back too far, which is why I think you will see probably, now, whether it passes, I don't know, but the fact that this bill passed almost unanimously last year, and everybody is back in their home districts now getting an earful about it, there'll be some legislation next year to go, wait a minute, let's claw this back a little bit. So it does what it was hopefully intended to do without what it was not intended to do.
Makes sense. No, that's super helpful. Thank you. That's all I got.
Commissioner Mark.
Thanks for the update. It was always very thorough. Just one question out. I've read a lot of the stuff. I'm just curious, from your point of view, what was the biggest surprise vote that you saw?
Oh, biggest surprise vote? I don't know. I've never been asked that before. There's so many votes. Rarely does anything surprisingly happen. Most things, if there, if a bill is up, you know it's happening. There was a bill related, a growth management bill, that had a large issue in it regarding ag enclaves. And it did not pass on the Senate floor, which was surprising. And that was rare to see, rare to see an issue like that, especially in the growth management area, come out. So that was definitely, it does happen. At the same time, it's also a great example. You know, once the bill is finally up, your work is done. I always joke, it's jury deliberations by that point.
So you can do.
You either made your case by that point or not, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. So not to spin it, but this is why you get engaged early. You stay engaged throughout the process. You don't wait for the agenda to come out and wait for the bill to be up. You know, if something is important to you, you have all the meetings and discussions long before it gets to the floor.
Yep. Thank you, Matt.
Sure.
Commissioner Forrest.
Yes, thank you for your report. I don't have any questions. I've been keeping up and reading extensively on this, but thank you for your overview, and I look forward to reading, and thank you.
Commissioner Cass.
Thanks. Yeah, one eighty is interesting because there is vague language, stringent development rules and things like that, which how, who's defining what's stringent or what isn't. So I'm with you. There'll be some changes in all probability, or we'll be able to fight it. But we don't always want to be in a situation where we're looking at litigation. The thing that I bring up every time you come, but first, I want to say thank you. You're always successful at getting us money, and we really appreciate you. Well worth your cost, for sure. Live Local is not working for Delray Beach at all. And I say this every time because I just want to keep reminding you. I think you probably know the chart changed recently. So the, what we're seeing constantly, because that's the requirement, is eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI is the built-in to take our super valuable commercial land use, industrial land use, and convert it to residential, something we desperately need, something valuable to the city, gets converted into apartments, which provide a small percentage of units at the eighty to one hundred and twenty AMI, which now, I believe, and forgive me because I, the number's escaping me, it's my age, is like ninety-six thousand to one hundred and eighteen thousand. Does not serve the residents in Delray Beach that really need affordable housing, workforce housing. It doesn't even touch it. So we don't benefit in any way, shape, or form from that. And if you could advocate for a city like ours that's outbilled out, that doesn't have, I mean, we used to have, back, I think, two thousand nineteen, we had two percent commercial, two percent industrial land use in Delray Beach. We're down probably to one, if that. It's important for us, and I think that's where we need to be, having someone really advocate for us.
So touching on that topic, again, that goes into, affordable housing fits into the Florida affordability. It's a constant theme in Tallahassee. There was more tweaks to the Live Local Act this year. We do know that, you know, one-size-fits-all is not working around the state, so they continue to tweak it and modify it. I know the sponsors of the legislation well. The intent is, of course, to address the affordability issue. As all local governments have always said, look, we need to fully fund Sodowsky funds so we can use them for affordable housing. So as we're developing.
AMI would be, though, if you're looking at sixty, would even be better.
Yeah.
The eighty just doesn't serve. I mean, we have a high number of low-paying jobs in our city by virtue of the fact that we are a tourist destination, and we really need to try and serve our residents better.
So what we can do is, when we're developing our legislative agenda with your staff, we'll include that in terms of what I call targets of opportunity. If your staff, which I know they can, army with the language that would kind of tweak that, modify that. We have talked before about adding a requirement in or preserving a percentage of industrial if a city doesn't have a certain amount, you know, keeping it there so that you do keep that dynamic. So, yeah, we will continue to, we can definitely advocate for that. We can definitely add it to our legislative agenda and
Thank you.
keep pushing for it next year.
I will. Thank you. I appreciate that more than you know. Thank you, Anthea, also, for your help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Forrest. I'm hoping that, you know, we're four miles by four miles here. We're a sixteen-square-mile community with not a lot of anything to spare. And so imposing what works for Polk County on Little Delray Beach is a little cumbersome sometimes. I just, one, I keep reading the Constitution and things with how they define home rule, and it's a kind of really a moving target. So, but you're doing a great job, and I really appreciate you coming into this afternoon to educate us. We hope our lawsuit does well with SB one eighty, but we'll have to see where that goes. But thank you so much for everything that you do.
My pleasure. Good to see you.
Great. We have now comments and inquiries on agenda and non-agenda items. City Manager, we have Mr. Hajimie to discuss the PFAS settlement, correct?
PFAS settlement. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, of course, the city attorney, myself, others, we've offered an update to the commission recently about success regarding PFAS settlement outcomes. That was followed by a subsequent weekly report regarding recommendations. Director of Utilities, Hassan Hajimiri, and I were able to assemble regarding what would be an appropriate use. So I'm simply offering a brief presentation with the help of Mr. Hajimiri to the commission to help provide some sense of consensus to proceed in this regard. We think this is appropriate, and to reiterate what my written report was a few weeks ago in this regard, really utilizing the funding opportunities to invest in the water treatment plant facility as well as subsequent infrastructure improvements to accompany the same. Mr. Hajimiri, if you would, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Hassan Hajimiri, Utilities Department. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you our journey in addressing PFAS in cities' drinking water supply and proactive testing and monitoring we undertook that ultimately contributed to a successful settlement in PFAS litigation. In August twenty twenty, just two months after I began my career, my role with the City Utilities Department, concerns were raised about possible PFAS contamination in our drinking water. I made the decision at that time to go ahead and voluntarily, voluntarily test and monitor the PFAS. We were not mandated, and it was a choice and a decision that I made that for almost few months, I regretted myself because, you know, we got into a lot of discussion. And I don't want to get too much detail on that. But anyhow, the whole purpose was to be transparent and to show the citizen of the Delray what's in their water and how it would compare with the other municipalities. So what we did, actually, every quarter, once every three months, we tested the drinking water leaving the water treatment plant for PFAS. And also, we tested all of our thirty production wells. The result of those tests were in our website, and we also shared those information with the Florida Department of Health. In twenty twenty-one, city of Delray Beach was the only city, only city that was testing for the PFAS in their drinking water. And at that time, there was an understanding that was that city of Delray Beach is the only one that has PFAS in their water. And that was a very hard time for me personally to digest, you know, what we were going through. So hopefully, in December of twenty twenty-one, EPA mandated as part of their UCMR five for all municipalities that they produce drinking water to start testing for PFAS in their water. That was nationwide, throughout the entire United States. And that result indicated that PFAS, let's say, contamination was throughout the entire country, not only city of Delray Beach. So we actually set a precedent of being transparent. And I want to take some, just a minute, to go over the history of this PFAS. Back in two thousand nine, EPA came up with the health advisory level for PFAS at six hundred parts per trillion, six hundred parts per trillion. And they kept that for almost close to seven years. In two thousand sixteen, they changed their number to seventy parts per trillion, two thousand sixteen. As we speak today also, is seventy parts per trillion. However, last year, they started the whole process of bringing that number down to eight parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS with the compliance date of twenty thirty-one. So are PFAS in our So our PFAS in our drinking water is about, is less than even fifty parts per trillion. A lot of people, when they hear fifty parts, they say, oh, my God. You know, it means fifty percent of the water that I'm drinking is PFAS. I just put a little sentence here. One part per trillion is a one drop of, let's say, dyed water or blue water, one drop in eighteen million gallons of water. Swimming pool, typical large swimming pool, is about eighteen thousand gallon, large swimming pool, residential. That means one drop in one thousand swimming pool. That's what one parts per trillion is, or one inch in sixteen miles. So that's how little it is. And one of the issues that we have had was actually getting accurate testing for these. And there is the, when we were testing for PFAS in our water, there was only one laboratory that they were certified to do that. Even with the new numbers that EPA is, uh, proposing, we're trying to find out which laboratory can even go that far to test it. So enough saying about that. So all this time, our PFAS in drinking water has been less than a health advisory level by EPA, still remain. And hopefully, God willing, within the next three years or so, we will have a nanofiltration treatment plan in place. So even with the new regulation that if it ever goes to effect, I have my doubt that we will have the, uh, hopefully zero PFAS in our water. Um, just one slide, PFAS is not the only, you, you probably have seen this many times. PFAS is not only in the water. I put, um, twelve, you know, areas here that we regularly, on a daily basis, we come in contact with the PFAS. And the human blood has much, much more PFAS contamination than a drinking water that we drink every day. Um, and this is for you to go on Google it. Is probably thousand times more PFAS that we have never been told, uh, by people. They say, okay, you got PFAS in your water, your water is bad. But our water, I just want to insist on that, is has been continuously meeting the health advisory level, and that is not even mandated. EPA has not established an MCL. P stands for the metal we have, but for the PFAS, it's not mandated. It's just advisory level. I don't want to go through all this thing, but I'm pretty sure you'd, um, uh, went through it. So luckily, in mid-two thousand twenty, thanks to the city attorney's office, we joined-
Two thousand twenty-two.
Two thousand twenty-two, I'm sorry, isn't it? Thank you. In two thousand twenty-two, uh, we joined a group of other municipalities to deal with this PFAS and hopefully bringing or making those manufacturers that have been responsible for doing this, because none of this has been done as part of the city. Our production wells has PFAS. And many other municipalities, their production wells are in the same area that the cities are, in unincorporated area. Two of the wells that we have the highest PFAS contamination are located within the unincorporated area in one of the most famous gardens that a lot of people go for visit, that nobody think that PFAS has been there. But it is. So anyhow, uh, we joined the, uh, that, uh, group of cities for PFAS litigation. Office of City Attorney and City Manager were continuously, on my case, make sure that we submit the data on time and complete, and which I think we did. We worked very hard with both offices. And luckily, in June of two thousand twenty-five, the lawsuit was successfully settled. And City of Delray Beach was awarded nearly fourteen million dollars compensation for the PFAS-related, uh, cost. And we're hoping that that fund will, um, support the ongoing water quality improvement and for customers. So that's fourteen million dollars. It's not going to be paid in one check to the city. There are two payments. One was already made, um, I think in June, a couple of months ago, and one will be made. Hopefully, I checked today to see if you have received it. We haven't received it yet, but we will. Thank you. So we have received, we will be receiving the second payment, which is a majority of that settlement. However, there is a twenty-five percent legal fee that has to be paid and are being subtracted from the first two payments, as I have it outlined here. The first payment was two-point-eight million. The second payment is going to be six-point-four million. We anticipating to have that by hopefully end of September. And then there are series of, um, eight payments that are going to be paid annually until year twenty thirty-three. I'm here today requesting that, um, that fund, since there is no restriction on the fund that we get in as part of this settlement, to be used for, um, water treatment process improvement as a whole for the city. That's what I'm asking. We already established a budget line item number. We already deposited the first pay, the first, not pay, the first settlement check in that account number, just to make sure that we know at any given times how much money is in that account and what is being used for. It could be used for any purpose, the water treatment plan itself as part of it. But, um, I'm not greedy. I just didn't want to lose the opportunity to have that fund for other purposes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's not really an action item on our behalf here today, or what?
My interest is direction and consensus, quite frankly. So again, we summarized in writing why this approach makes sense. We thought it was appropriate for a public presentation to clarify the facts regarding PFAS and what accomplishments had been made by the City of Delray Beach to yield this financial outcome and the appropriateness of utilizing the funding towards the Department of Utilities operation, especially considering the path forward relative to the water and sewer facility, nanofiltration, et cetera. So in essence, the recommendation is to utilize those resources towards improvements that operation type.
Okay. Commissioner Casal, thoughts?
Sure. I support, um, your request, and you did make that request in your letter, which was affixed to the agenda. I thank you for being very clear on that. I don't think this money should go towards the general fund balancing the day-to-day budget. It absolutely should go to the utilities and for the water. And I also want to say, I remember, well, first in two thousand twenty-two when we agreed, and I thank you again, city attorney, and Gina Carter was involved, and you were as well, Mr. Hajimiri, because we got a seat at the table, and a lot of cities did not. This is an amazing accomplishment for Delray Beach, and thank you for your part. I also want to thank you because recently you sent us an email, and you have collected over a million dollars in, um, I believe, unpaid utility water bills in, in, in a period of time. And I want to thank you because the thing about you that I always appreciate, and it goes for almost all of our directors, all of our directors, I would say, this job isn't a job for you. I, I know when that PFAS stuff was going on, how much it affected you because you took it personally because your commitment to this city and our residents is, is overwhelming to me. And I, I will say every time I see you, how much I appreciate you. And just today is another example in collecting that, uh, money that has been, we haven't been able to collect for a very long time. Good for you, Mr. Hajimiri, and thank you.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes, um, I just want to say thank you for taking the initiative and doing the due diligence on, on this, um, on this project. I was hoping that we could use these funds to directly credit our residents for some of the increases that they're going to receive, but I will support, um, this going to the utilities because it still is gonna indirectly, um, benefit with our water treatment plan. So thank you.
Commissioner Markert?
She, she mentioned Hassan during that period, you were very cranky. I just want to put that out there. No, I'm kidding. Just a quick question for you. It wasn't in the materials, uh, the, the PFAS pollution that went on, was that centered around landfills? Or were there, were there pockets that were worse than others? And where would it have affected us in the city here?
I want to go through the whole story of how it started. I was, I was planning to bring that out, this whole thing started, but I wanted to keep it out of this.
All right, well, that's-
Actually, it, it started with an individual that collected a sample at the wastewater treatment plant. And then everybody thought that, you know, their water is just, you know, it's not drinkable.
Right.
And it's poisonous. So that's why I made the decision to-
Okay.
It was our decision to make.
It was a good call.
Because, um, because of that, we were gathering all this information, and then we were able to provide it when the money itself, and to provide it hopefully much more readily available than other municipalities to, to meet this.
Yeah, that's great. I, I also, like my other commissioners, support your recommendation on what to do with this money. So thank you.
Commissioner Law?
Yeah, I want to echo the, the comments made from my colleagues, and thank you, Hassan, for your hard work during this crusade, which I know is very, very frustrating at times and unfair at times. But like you said, it did yield an outcome that I think is going to help Delray continue to be sort of trailblazer in, in terms of having, uh, really, really well-treated water and having a reputation for that. And so really appreciate you sticking with it and seeing us through a, a very difficult time on this. And again, thanks to our city attorney for, for making sure that we were at the table to, to bring this back. It's a really exciting thing for Delray. It's a big win for us, and I'm absolutely in support of making sure these funds get applied for, you know, these utility improvements.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank the city attorney for getting us a seat at the table. This is a nice little windfall for us. And, and, and Mr. Hajimiri, for also your diligence and, you know, what being, one of some of the early ones to do all the testing, gave us a great leg up going into these things. I too had hoped maybe some of the money would go to provide some relief for some of the people paying water bills, which are about to see some major increases. But if this is going to somehow help the, the, your department to help defray the costs for these homeowners down the road, uh, that, that, so that they will ultimately see a benefit, then I will support your, um, this, this recommendation. So I think you have a consensus now, right?
I seek consensus, and I feel that we have it, so we will proceed accordingly.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen, the next item, if I may, financing and rate structure considerations for the Delray Beach Municipal Golf Course. So it was Commissioner Tom Markert during the workshop meeting evening, presentation this evening, pardon me. You acknowledged the fact that we had not one but two workshops, excuse me, town hall, community engagement exercises, one taking place Thursday, November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, the second taking place Thursday, April twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, in which we had an opportunity to share with the community, those in attendance, what the anticipated project will be all about in terms of the renovation of the facility. We talked a little bit about financial transaction commitments and the prospect of a updated rate structure to help us be in position to finance considerations moving forward. Subsequent to that was direction as offered by the Office of the City Manager, working collaboratively with the Department of Public Works and the Department of Parks and Recreation, notably to proceed with a rate structure analysis to help evaluate what that might look like for the City of Delray Beach. Fortunately, that became possible by way of our existing relationship with public financial management, the city's external financial advisor, working closely with us on the water and sewer revenue bond issue, which is before you this evening as well. So as we have leadership from public financial management with us this afternoon, we've also made them available to offer a brief presentation relative to the rate study as well as an opportunity for a path forward as we proceed. I will advise, based on previous commitments and direction offered to this effect, that the City of Delray Beach is also engaged in a contractor selection process of which recommendations will be forthcoming. So the timing of the opportunity to get to a place in which we can receive the support of the commission to continue to outline path forward is a fairly impeccable timing arrangement. With that, I'd like to ask Jay Glover, representing Public Financial Management, along with one of his colleagues, relative to the rate structure as well as what the anticipated guidance will be relative to revenue bond transaction considerations and what anticipated recommendations will be forthcoming, really in the coming weeks over the next couple of months or so. So, Mr. Glover, if you would, please.
Perfect. Mr. Moore, thank you so much. Mayor, Commissioners, again, Jay Glover from PFM.
You know, all the golfers are watching this. They want to know how much they're going to have to pay. I mean, they're all at home saying, you know.
Well, hopefully, we have some potentially good news for them. I don't know what their expectations are, but again, um, we are the city's financial advisor, and one of my affiliate companies, PFM Group Consulting, does a lot of long-term financial planning and budget work for local governments. And they are the group that put this report together for you all. So I will turn it over to Joe Buckshon, who will walk through some of the preliminary recommendations for you all, and then I will come back at the end of the presentation, just to kind of wrap things up and talk about next steps.
Great. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Just going to go through here, uh, this is just the team that put together the presentation for you. And briefly, I'm just going to touch on the supply and demand for golf. I know it's, uh, you know, you said there's lots of interested parties out there who, uh, want to play often, but, uh, just in case you haven't checked in in a while, there's a lot of growth happening. We'll talk about the Delray Beach Golf Club, our rate study, uh, and some of the comparable courses we looked at in the region. There's a few case studies that we can touch on briefly. We'll walk through the future rates and the pro forma, how that all works out financially for the golf course. Uh, and then, like Jay said, we'll get into some, some next steps. So, like I said, I won't spend too much time here, um, but the sort of market for golf, um, is very, very hot right now. The last two years, there have been records set for the number of rounds played in the U.S. It's exceedingly, uh, it's becoming more and more popular with young folks. Again, maybe not something that you'd, uh, know unless you were following the space. But there also, at the same time, has been a decrease in the number of courses available. And that's due to a number of factors, but, uh, you'll see that there's been sort of a trend towards renovating existing courses to improve the conditions, to bring them up to par, so to speak, with the newer technology, uh, the newer approaches to maintenance, uh, that, you know, are, are becoming more and more popular. So, uh, there's an increase in demand at the same time that supply is going away and being converted to other uses. So renovation is kind of the most popular route right now for either adding to or improving, uh, the facilities in the U.S. We did a quick look at the Delray Beach Golf Club, um, and, you know, there were some studies done a few years ago. You all are, are probably familiar with them. You may remember them, um, related just to some of the, the benefits. So it's a very popular course. It's got, you know, over fifty thousand rounds a year pretty consistently. There's active men's and ladies' golf associations, which is great. It's got a sort of golden age architecture going for it, which again is something that's become a trend that's increasingly important, uh, to golfers. So Donald Ross and Dick Wilson collaborated sort of on each nine, uh, if you will. There's some, uh, long-term issues related to that design, unfortunately. So as the soil has eroded and changed, um, there are irrigation, irrigation issues. There are budgetary constraints that are, that are harmful to the maintenance of the course and, and sort of leads to a, you know, a worsening of conditions. And that, you know, follows, right? If, if you're somebody who golfs a lot in the region, uh, you probably know the places that are in better shape or not, and maintenance budget is a big driver of that. There's lots of opportunities, uh, because of this. So like I said, golf has really exploded, especially post-pandemic. There's, uh, opportunity to improve the conditions through things like irrigation and turf management. There's opportunities also to just include, uh, to just improve the maintenance structure and the, the situation there. There is sort of, uh, you know, a reputation, uh, that's a bit of a threat now. I've, I've seen some of the public comments as well from some residents that suggest that they see that there could be, uh, you know, better conditions and that they might be willing to pay a bit more, uh, for that. And there's a lot of competition. So there's some other courses in the, in the region that have been renovated or, uh, that are offering other amenities that you'll need to contend with as well. This is just a quick look historically, again, at sort of the average rates over time and the average rounds played, or the total rounds played, rather. So you can see that the average really hasn't changed much since the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, uh, season. So, you know, if you had just increased that thirty-nine dollars- know, if you had just increased that $39 by inflation, I think it would be something around $54 as opposed to 45. So, you know, you all have not raised the rates because it's a community asset. It's a public course. We understand that. But because it's maintained its popularity, that creates sort of a gap between the revenues you're getting and the maintenance level that you might need. We looked across 29 different courses that were sort of a variety of very local and a bit further out because golfers will travel for quality. And you can see, you know, Delray ends up being 11th out of 29 for the peak resident rate. Non-resident rates are higher, as you can see. Lots of folks offer, or lots of municipalities offer discounts for their residents. And for yearly rounds played, it's sort of right in the middle, which again, might be, might be surprising because it's not necessarily known as being a destination or, you know, driving a lot of rounds through that angle. But it is quite popular. And so we considered a bunch of different factors when comparing these. You'll see that I have several tables here. As we go through, I won't read this off because I think that would be quite boring. But, you know, we kind of ranked everybody based on their rates and tried to gather as much information about rounds played through outreach as we could. That generally isn't publicly available, although sometimes it's in the press. One thing that you'll note is we also included that sort of date of last renovation. And you could see towards the top of the list, there's lots of 2023, 2019, 2022, et cetera. So that's definitely part of what drives the ability to charge a higher rate. And these are all, like I said, just the compendium of prices and conditions that we looked through. Really quickly, because I know it's a popular one, the park at West Palm Beach, we looked at as a case study. It's sort of a resort course that got put in where a municipal golf course formerly was. There was a ton of private money raised that they spent a lot of money sort of totally bulldozing it and completely rebuilding it. The rates you could see are significantly higher. They dynamically priced the course so that, you know, you might pay significantly more on a holiday weekend if there's lots of demand. And they also have pretty extensive, you know, practice facilities, clubhouse, et cetera, to have people there even when they're not playing and driving revenue in that way. So this is a very high price, high quality kind of product. Another one, sort of across the state in Dunedin, just north of Tampa, is another Donald Ross municipal course. They spent about $6 million compared to the much, much higher budget at the park. And, you know, they did, they did a mix of sort of funding to put it together. They did it over a three-year period. And you could see their rate sort of ends up at $135 for a peak rate and $102 for a resident rate. And that is, you know, more of a restoration or a renovation as opposed to the work that's being suggested for a Delray Beach. So I think it sort of shows that you can find a space in the middle, that, you know, you don't have to aim quite so high and chase the park. But there's lots of space in the market for what you have in store for Delray Beach Golf Club. This is the recommended rate table. Apologies, it's a little small on the screens. But I could tell you that we have in 2027, the resident rate would be starting out at $82 for 18 holes in a cart, and the non-resident rate would be $107. So it's about a 25% discount for residents. And then we have rates sort of increasing into the future a bit again to kind of make up for lost time from not raising them for so long. We also have permit holders to keep in mind. So we know that those folks are already kind of, they already hold those permits. They paid for them. So we also put in sort of a lower set of prices reflecting that investment or that sort of membership that they hold. And we use kind of prior year data on how often those permit holders are playing to work them into our pro forma. Again, sorry, this is very tiny. But this is the full kind of pro forma that takes into account actual budget results from 2022, 2023, 2024, and then an estimate for 2025. We've broken out all the revenues and sort of inflated them appropriately. But we're being pretty conservative for anything other than the rates, which obviously we modeled more specifically, but things like merchandise, things like food and beverage. We've just kind of got a basic level of inflation built in there. 2026 is the year that we're targeting for the renovation. So obviously, there won't be revenue coming in while the course is closed. The level of expenses is sort of to be determined or, you know, a little bit more difficult maybe to project. But, you know, on a, on a, when you, when you take depreciation out of the picture, 2027, we are sort of cash positive for the course and able to make the savings, the investments into things like future capital expenditures, for example, as part of the budget as well. And it sort of maintains going out into the future. And we also have sort of estimates in here for the debt service that I'll let my colleague Jay talk about when we get there. So again, this is just sort of a summary. So that sort of higher quality, lower price green quadrant is where everybody wants to live. And I think you all have an opportunity to do that. You certainly don't want to end up just raising your prices and not improving the product. That wouldn't make much sense. But then also sort of the higher quality, higher price example, like I shared with the park at West Palm, is one way to go, but probably isn't necessary to have a successful operation. And just a few last considerations. So, you know, we feel that a higher rate is supported both by just the market study, by anecdotal evidence from things we've seen and heard as we've gone through this process. The level of renovation planned also sort of justifies a significant rate increase in our view. And there's sort of more opportunities for revenue that we're outside of our scope, that we feel we're being very conservative sort of in how we're estimating those. But things like food and beverage or merchandise, practice facility usage, and things like being able to increase league tournament or outing fees because of the higher quality of the course. That, of course, will increase expenses as well. And I should have noted on that slide that we did build in a higher maintenance budget based on the recommendations from previous studies that were done. And that should be, that should continue to be monitored. But we feel, as we've shown, that the rate increases would be more than enough to support that. Jay?
Perfect. Just to kind of wrap things up here, I mean, obviously, we welcome any questions you all have about the rate study. But assuming we get some type of direction to move forward, and obviously, the project proceeds, we would be bringing before you at a subsequent meeting, a bond resolution to issue debt to finance these construction projects. I think the amount is a little bit to be determined. But that financing would be secured by non-adlorm revenues of the city. But we have built into the pro forma, you know, the debt service to be covered by the golf course operations as part of that pro forma. So that, that ultimately will be what funds the project if you all move forward.
Could I ask you to say that one more time? Because I, I've heard that from a lot of our residents, like, how is this actually getting paid for? And I like what you just said, and I like the words, and I'd like everybody to hear that, just so people don't think that everybody's gonna pay for this. It's not, it's the golfers who are gonna pay for it, which is what we want.
The main reason behind this study is to put a rate structure in place that will allow the golf course to be self-sufficient and not subsidized by the general fund. Obviously, things happen, COVID, other things to prevent that. But the pro forma, if you can see here at almost the very bottom, it says new debt service for 2026 project, starting, you know, in 2026 with an issuance and then ramping up to, say, $1.3, $1.7 million. I think we assumed a 25 or so million dollar project. Don't hold me to that. But that is the debt service associated with the financing to fund the cost of these projects. So based on this pro forma, we show that the golf course operations, based on the recommended rate structure, will cover the debt service for this project and not require any general fund subsidy.
Okay, that's, that's great. I just wanted everybody to know that because I've heard that over and over from a lot of residents. And this seems like a very fair, equitable way for us to handle this in the community. So I like this.
And with that, that concludes our presentation. We'll address any additional questions you all might have.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Jay. I think that, and Joe, I think that, you know, this rate structure is very competitive. And I think it's going to be, I mean, I've played that West Palm Beach course, and it's, they're not shy about their prices. And, and this is really, I mean, this would work very, very well, this price structure, I think, for Delray. And I do think that with the non-resident costs, we're gonna have a lot of hotels here and things that are going to be very anxious to kind of include in their packages that they offer the ability to play here. So it's gonna be, I think it's a win-win really for everybody. So anyway, thank you for the, for the study. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Long?
No, this feels too good to be true, frankly. It's like, this is too easy. We've been like grappling with this for a while. So this, this seems like a really great solution. Thank you, guys.
You're gonna take up golf now?
Yeah, I should start, right?
Well, listen, I mean, you know.
Too poor to golf.
Yeah, okay. Do you have any more questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner Burns?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm not a golfer, but these rates look pretty decent. And it's time to stop kicking this can down the road and go on with this.
Commissioner Cassal?
I do. The 25 million, and this may be for Missy rather than the gentleman, because if, could I ask her a question, if you don't mind? Missy, I apologize. Is it okay during this presentation?
Well, she's coming up. I mean, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to know what you, I'm assuming you work with staff to get that number. But what is that going to encompass? That's the golf course. Does that include the clubhouse as well?
I thought right now, so correct me.
Thank you. I apologize, gentlemen.
Yeah, the number is 27 million, and that includes all of the renovations to the golf course as well as to the clubhouse. Okay, thank you.
So ladies and gentlemen.
I didn't, I didn't see a divot repair fee in case I play, you know, just the restoring the course after certain of us played, you know.
There's an increase magnitude.
That's gonna be on the footnote somewhere, hopefully?
Yeah.
Anyway, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen. So as a result of the hard work, lengthy engagement to get to the place and we can offer definitive recommendations, good questions, good clarification have been offered, I formally request consensus from the city commission to, A, proceed with the necessary rate adjustments, and B, to essentially come back with bond issuance resolutions and all other transaction considerations that Mr. Glover discussed in his commentary so that we can get down to business in this regard. What this will also mean, particularly for the Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as working closely with the Department of Public Works, beginning literally in the coming days, we will do more assertive work in terms of communicating to the community stakeholders or interested parties what this is all about. Because again, we are contemplating the initiation of renovations later this year and much of 2026, in which is to be accomplished. So we talked a little bit about the possibility, November, December timeframe, being able to initiate what's what. I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that a contractor selection process is currently in the minute as well. So with you all's consensus to formally proceed in every regard, we will do more to inform the community, golf course, residents, stakeholders, et cetera, so that everybody can be excited about the prospect moving forward. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to have your consensus formally in every regard so that we can get to work.
Consensus?
Yes.
Consensus, consensus, consensus?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Glover. And so just to add briefly, because the water and sewer revenue bond consideration is one of the consent agenda items, which is now a regular meeting item, please stick around in that regard. But we will be quite busy. The Office of the City Manager, the Department of Finance, respective departments, Parks and Recreation, the utilities, as well as Public Works with respect to engagements with Moody's Investor Service, SMB Global Ratings beginning tomorrow. So we're working extremely hard. That's a big part of our focus in this time. I emphasize this, ladies and gentlemen, because the city of Delray Beach, considering all of this, is really on the precipice of an unprecedented level of infrastructure improvements and capital enhancements for the community. So that's the principal focus for us in this regard and a lot in which to be excited. So looking forward to it, and thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you.
You finished? This is the part of our meeting, part of our, this part of our show where we invite the audience to come up and come to the lectern for public comment. You'll each have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record. And we're just, there's a line, there's a queue that will be forming on this side of the room.
It's like cool.
There you are. You're the first.
Okay.
Name and address for the record.
Hi, Michelle Danich, 23, Southwest 6th Street. I actually want to also thank you, Mr. Hajamiri, for collecting the revenue for the unpaid water bills. Every dollar counts when trying to collect revenue for Delray Beach. And I know that their department takes it even a step further when people don't comply and they remove their water meters. I know that they place liens on them. And these liens, I thought, were the job that the, that you were, the department for, of your code enforcement. I thought that they're the ones that are kind of supposed to act on those liens. And not that I'm being, well, a lot of people aren't gonna like me, but I'm trying to clean up my street. So that's just that. The bottom line is that there is, in my street where I live, there have been, so there's 13 houses where I live, nine of them have renters, but only three of them are actual rental properties. So let's start just with that. So you have many people that actually, that are renting there, that do not pay their water bills. One in particular that has not paid their water bill for 10 years. They have four liens slapped on it. And I only found out last week that they actually have been running a hose to the house from the neighbors for the last three years. Now, I did get up here probably three years ago and complained about this very thing about having renters on the street that, that the city could be collecting more tax revenue on. In particular, the case of First versus Redholds was in April of '23, which stated that it limited the homestead tax exemptions for rentals, at least for that portion where the property is being rented out. Now, I contacted the city and then I contacted the assessor's office. They actually sent people physically out. And they, at the end of the day, stated because the water bills on the, under the original owner, that they're still considered a homestead. So I went a step further and actually sent a rental agreement on one of the properties where there's seven people on one of the properties, the people who owned it haven't lived there for 10 years. And they're still getting their homestead exemptions. So while I'm paying nine grand a year in property taxes, all these other properties are paying basically 1,000, 1,200 bucks. And I have cameras, so I can show you and I can assure you that if you would only comply with like Florida statute 196015, which determines your homestead eligibility, one of those determinations, you can look at the voter registration. So I, and Florida is very, you know, open about our registrations. I myself pulled up the list of the people, 10, 12 people registered at these houses. I sent that actual list to the assessor's office. I know that's not here in this city. But they said that they're not using that. They're using the utility bills. So I'm just saying there's an issue here. Sorry if I'm going slightly over, and I know where to stop at this point. But my issue is, at the very minimum, Delray could do the part about, on the properties where there's these liens from the unpaid utilities, code enforcement needs to foreclose on those properties. That's my beef. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna pass this along as I introduce myself. My name's Pat Schrader, and I have a long history in Delray Beach. My parents had their honeymoon here above Boston's during the war. And then, you know.
Ma'am, I believe you have the, for your address as well?
Oh, 2534 Southwest 12th Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
We've had a business here for 27 years, retired now and sold it. And so I'm very invested in it. I look up here at the plaque, and it says, "In All-American City, 93,01, and 17." Okay, so I went to Iceland a couple of weeks ago. In Akavari, they have done something during COVID that was so touching to me. And since I know how much this city wants to let people know how much they appreciate and the loving and the caring that you have and how you want people to feel welcomed and cared about. This is a, for those of you that haven't seen it, they had a street light. All the street lights in Akavari, Iceland, had a heart, a red heart for the red light. It seems very simple to do. They, I've come up with three different versions of it. Taking off the lens, painting, you know, have a template and paint it black so that you would have the red heart. Or have a template of tin or something of that nature that would not heat up and make it a heart. Or take out the little LED lights that are in the light and make it a heart. I'm not saying every light in the city, some of the places that are highly visible, and maybe some places that there have been tragedies and where we've added lights because of the tragedies, showing that we still care. tragedies, showing that we still care, we are thinking of them and just to make people smile. And so that is my proposal and it's on Google, they show you if you go into Akavari, Iceland. And I just want something for the city to be beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Montreux Bennett three twenty-three Northwest Second Avenue. Forty years ago, the CRE was created and the CRE was created to rid of slum and blight. Here we are, nineteen eighty-seven, I was born and when I was born, I could see a lot of things which I don't see now. The set shall become a place of opportunity, resiliency, inclusion and wellness through equitable policies, development, strategic partnerships and community leadership. The city needs to stop all other plans that they're trying to do until after September third, when all the update planning meetings have taken place for the set transformation plan. Yes, we want a grocery store, yes, we want a bank, yes, we want medical institutes, pharmacies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But our homes need to be weatherproof and that's what we need y'all to focus on, focus on the people and what we ask for y'all to do. Yes, we want Atlantic Avenue built out, but we want our homes to be sustainable as well. We heard them talk about weather earlier. We can't stop no hurricane, we can't stop water from flooding this place, we can't start none of that stuff, but what we can do is have a house that's suited enough to help, help us, in fact, if something does come that's in a tremendous standard like Hurricane Katrina in New Orleans. I had something else to say, I didn't write it down because it just was on my head as the lady was talking. But go to the schools and meet with the principals where they are, they can't make it to half of this stuff because they in the school all day to six o'clock. So meet people where they at and stop trying to bring people here.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Chance, I live at two-two-one Northeast Fifteenth Street here in Delray and I don't know if any of you have heard of the Florida Shuffle. The Florida Shuffle is a, is a form of body brokering that exploits loopholes in the Affordable Care Act. Non-Florida residents are obtaining Florida state insurance and food stamps using false addresses. Patients are flown into Florida, free plane tickets, which is illegal, and shuffled between rehab center, centers and sober living homes. Operations are making money off of sick people. They're often housing drug addicts with mentally ill patients. Public resources are being drained by the police, ambulances and even three B shuttle services are being used heavily. Are there regulations in Delray Beach limiting, limiting the number of residents, number of people that are unrelated that can live in one single home? Is it illegal or illegal to run brothels in the state of Florida? So what laws exist for sober living? For instance, there's a home just off Atlantic that has sixteen women that are living in it that are not related and the, and the woman that is operating it is just turned twenty-one and has ten months of sobriety. There is reportedly only one officer in the, in the city of Delray Beach that is responsible for regulating sober homes. The number of homes opening daily is overwhelming for a single point, single person to be regulating. Establishing clear and enforceable guidelines for sober living homes, I think it's imperative. I am a podcast host, I am a sober coach and I have nineteen years of continuous sobriety. I came from Philadelphia, I've lived here for three years. I just was introduced to what the Florida Shuffle was from a woman who came here from South Carolina, from a small town near where Clemson University is. She came here, she was told what address to use to get Florida insurance. She's been, the Florida insurance has paid over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to this person that's not even a Florida, a Florida resident, she's a resident of South Carolina. Not only that, but she was asked to get food stamps while she's here. Who's paying for those? We are? And nobody's getting better. So you get a free plane ticket to come to Delray Beach, you think your child's gonna be okay or your loved one, where they are, they're also, they're selling drugs there because they want you to go out and go start using drugs again, because once you start using drugs again, you go back in and they start charging the insurance company again. The book Finding, Fighting the Florida Shuffle by Dave Ehrenberg, who used to be a DA for Palm Beach County, his, his book just came out, he was on my podcast, it drops on Thursday. We need to do something, we don't have any money, but all these people are making money off of the sick people of this country and we need to do something here, it's deadly.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, may I just for a moment, city attorney, we do have, miss, I appreciate what you said and I'm, I'm not disputing it, but we do have some local regulations with respect to.
But it's not enough, because I will tell you, there's one right down the street, I mean, what we're doing here, for what, what is happening with the people that are coming in here every day?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted the residents to know that we do have some regulations.
We're not doing a discussion, but thank you.
Thank you, miss, I appreciate your time.
It's disgusting.
Thank you very much.
George Long, forty-six North, and I will be reading the book.
Go read the book.
I will read it. I've, I've, I've heard the stories.
Thank you very much.
I used to drive, I knew some people that I took to crossroads or something up there, two different people at two different times a day, friends of mine or people I knew. Somebody said, wow, I keep seeing your car. And I said, I'm just dropping people off there, I don't go twice a day, anyway. Anyway, I want to point out that we're, we're, we are worried about the live local, Miami, Fort Lauderdale, same thing, Miami are building a four thousand unit structure there, nobody's gonna be able to afford that, that's, that's working. Now, when the, Mr. Forrest came up, he mentioned something that I thought I would bring up just briefly, something else to worry about. Believe it or not, in Orlando, in East Orlando, there are some lawyers working for some ranchers and landowners there that can keep a straight face and go to the county, Orange County, and say, a hurricane came through here a couple of years ago, we want to build a subdivision on this ranchland. Incredible, so we have to watch out for that. Now, excuse me, the second thing I want to bring up was events that are taking place. You know, we have a logo, Village by the Sea, we got, I think we could change that, Village where stuff happens, just to give you an example of so many things that are going on, how great this town is, just in the last couple of weeks, I went to a drone show, never seen anything like that, these drones were fantastic, they were flying around, looked like random patterns, like fireflies, and they took the forms, dolphins, tennis players, things like that, it was really, really an experience. Also, just a few days ago, I went to the Crest Theater where they, the building, they created the, the arts center there and they had all these different displays of arts, things like that, and I was introduced to watercolors for the first time, just, just in a few minutes, I just, you know, felt like, well, I learned a lot. I knew how to oil paint, I took a course in college, but I had no idea about it, and I'm gonna take a course there. It's really great. And then the historical society, these are, you know, we're gonna have, what, ceramics, I think, it's coming up there too, in addition to the, you know, oh, yes, I believe there's gonna have ceramics there also coming up. Also, some city supported institutions have some really good stuff going on. The Historical Society had a lecture on, on the coast and how people have adapted to the coast and it was a whole different approach. Anyway, I learned a lot, it was just incredible and there's more, the list just goes over pages here, but I got half time, my time is up.
Look forward to hearing you next week. Thank you, Mr. Long.
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners, my name is Mike Ting, correspondence address six-six-two Lake Worth Road, Street F, Lake Worth, Florida, three-three-four-six-seven. I'm speaking tonight, representing and speaking on behalf of Mr. Bill Levy, president of the Board of Directors, Sable Lakes Phase One Homonous Association and Sable Lakes Master Cost Sharing Association here in Delray Beach. This comment pertains to the stretch of Barwick Road spanning north from Lake Idar Road to the L thirty Canal that has a protective road and sidewalk barrier in place, a crucial part of city infrastructure that keeps area residents, cyclists and elementary school aged children that attend Banian Creek Elementary safe on the sidewalk away from vehicular traffic. This stretch of barrier has been repetitively struck by motor vehicles over the years. It is a vital part of city infrastructure, keeping school drop off and pickup foot traffic separate from the high volume of traffic during peak times. Our Board of Directors understand that future improvement plans to this stretch of Barwick Road does not have this protective barrier in place once it is removed for the improvement project. Due to the much higher than average amount of elementary school aged children foot traffic, we strongly believe that a protective barrier is required to keep elementary school children from straying into the roadway and also keeps our residents safe. Please consider installing a substantial enough physical barrier in place to protect our little children, which also helps the crossing guards and police officers who dedicate their time and commitment in their duty in keeping our residents and children safe each and every day of the school year regardless of the weather or traffic conditions. Please also keep our master association advised on the timelines and public input sessions with regard to this improvement project. As recently, with the installation of school zone speed cameras and also in our past, association utility infrastructure has been damaged and therefore the association is requesting fully open lines of communication going forward. Thank you, the Board of Directors, Sable Lakes, State of the Way.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, commissioners, Suzanne Boyd, the Director of Marketing for the Delray Beach Downtown Development Authority. I just wanted to address a couple of comments, public comments that have been made about the DDA, taking a play from the, a page from the Marjorie Waldo Arts Garage playbook and just correcting some things that have been said and making sure that we let the public know about what the DDA does. I'm gonna be specifically addressing a public comment from a downtown resident that the DDA doesn't do anything for them, doesn't communicate with them, and I just wanted to kind of give a brief understanding of what the DDA does for our downtown residents and communicating with them. So everyone thinks the DDA throws events and yes, we do do that, George and his wife, Rose, have been to many of our events, but we also, a huge chunk of what we do is the downtown safety ambassadors, the yellow shirts, they keep our downtown safe and deal with nuisance issues. We do the beautiful holiday lighting and street pole banners that happen in downtown, the lighting that's along West Atlantic Avenue and the cafe lights across Northwest Fifth Avenue and Pineapple Grove. So all of these things for our downtown residents not only improve their quality of life, but it also improves their property values. So that is a lot of what we do for the downtown residents. The other thing was about communication and I just want to go through all of the communication channels that we have at the DDA for our downtown residents. We send out weekly email newsletters, we have a robust social media platforms, a hundred and fifty thousand followers on all of our platforms. Our website is very, it has almost a million page views a year, so people are always finding out information on our website, public board meetings once a month, we do send out direct mailers, we've sent out direct mailers twice over the last two years, two times a year, going directly to our downtown residents, telling them about our town hall that happens every year. We send out a VIP, via VIP at our free concerts at Old School Square for our downtown residents. In fact, Rose has been in our VIP many times. We send out surveys and so we are doing our best to communicate with our downtown residents to let them know about what we are doing. And I do want to invite everyone to our town hall, it is tomorrow night, there is a survey on the back that we would love for people to give us feedback about what they would like to see in downtown. So I do wanted to share this with you all and if anyone is a downtown stakeholder or downtown resident, we would love to see you tomorrow night at the Vintage Gym at five o'clock and my time is up.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, the Board of Commissioners, my name is Justin Millian, I'm here representing the Haitian base, faith base, different Haitian leaders that are here.
Your address as well, sir?
I'm sorry?
Your address for the record.
The address, I probably have to give you one of the church addresses, I don't live in Delray Beach anymore.
Doesn't matter, whatever your address is, it's fine.
Okay, my previous address was twenty-one eighty-seven Dorson Way. Born and raised here in Delray Beach, proud Delray Beach resident, I just am here on behalf, we have two Haitian pastors here represented in this room, based off of the, the scariness that is happening with the Haitian Americans and the Haitians that are being removed, based off ICE, a few weeks ago, we got a chance to sit with Chief Hunter, who really gave us some form of calmness, knowing that our police department wasn't out here assisting ICE on removing our Haitians residents from Delray Beach. Multiple leaders have received multiple concerns from their churches, within the last few months, we've decreased in numbers, members have not come to church, a place where they're supposed to come for refuge and answer, they have not been able to. A lot of parents have not sent children to school, I have two particular families here in Delray Beach that have not sent their children to school based off of the fear of knowing that their child can be taken and separated from them. I'm here not only to voice our concern about the ICE, but to voice the, an awareness to Chief Hunter's position as of right now. We need someone that hears our voice, we need someone that cares, him taking the time out to invite us into his chambers and to talk, it was huge. The number one thing that I think that stuck out the most was letting us know that our residents here in Delray Beach don't have to be afraid of the Delray Beach Police. We weren't equipped in that area and so accidents, they would flee accidents if an accident happened, they were scared to stay if an accident took place. You know, if they're in a state of emergency, they're scared to call due to the fact of, because of their status or whatsoever. I do want to put on record that we will be more so in these meetings, coming to these meetings so that we may know not just what is happening for that particular area, but also the pastors that are here, that have been here for over forty and twenty years, to know what they have access to them as far as funding, as far as their church code and, and, and enforcements. There's a lot of low income facility or buildings that are going up and their members are not qualifying for them. And so there is so much power and that we're now planning to stand up, but I definitely want to go on record by saying, you know, we truly, truly would love Chief Hunter to stay in the position that he's in and also please to wear awareness to this team and this board about the ICE that's out here moving in the city of Delray Beach.
Thank you, thank you very much and we look forward to your continued participation.
Kyle Holder, one oh-two Southwest Ninth Avenue. I am here, first to thank Missy and her team for having the lights turned back on in our neighborhood, we were told it would be four months, it was completed in forty-five days, so thank you very much for making that miracle happen. I am also very concerned, I had to meet with code enforcement staff this morning in regard to the Land Development Regulation seven point eight-three, which deals with the maintenance of buildings or structures required, means and responsibilities. Reason being is that I have an abandoned house in my block and on July eighth, the seven day notice was placed on the side of notice was placed on the side of the building. The grass is now more than four feet tall, and to this day, I think we can all agree that if you put a posting on a building on July 8th, this is well beyond those seven-day terms in order for the city to have taken action and to lien the property as specified according to the red posting. What I have found from staff today is that the LDR Chapter 7 is currently being reviewed and updated. I am here to implore you to expedite that process. Why? Because I have children who play on that, on that block, and there's grass that is higher than they are. And God forbid that on one of those days when they're riding their scooter, that something the size of a slither out of that grass and bites one of those children. I have senior citizens who no longer take their regular daily walks down that street because they are afraid of what could come out of that grass. Even if the grass is cut, the home is now owned by someone who lives outside of the city of Delray. There are visible cracks and visible holes in the structure itself. There is no doubt in my mind, living in Florida in a tropical climate this time of year, that something has taken nest in this home, which does not have lights and which does not have water. And to add insult to injury, the owner saw fit to install a solar-powered motion light on the front of the house, but would not answer to any of the correspondents from the city. That being said, your staff, and I will allow them to remain nameless at this time because I have an email from them assuring me that the grass will be cut, but I am here also to ask you to please expedite the process which, which deals with those types of abandoned buildings. Right now, there's a lot of rules, there's plenty of regulations as far as homes that are damaged due to fire, not homes that have been purchased and abandoned. And right now, I am very worried that, God forbid, something comes out of that grass and injures a child or a senior citizen, all because of some paperwork.
Thank you very much. What's the address of the property with the grass?
Address of the property is 109 Southwest Ninth Avenue.
Thank you very much.
It is the third house, it is the second house from the, from the corner, it is the third lot from the corner.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Laura Simon from the Downtown Development Authority, 350 Southeast First Street. Good evening, just wanted to reiterate Suzanne's invitation to our town hall meeting tomorrow evening at 5:00. We will be reviewing our 2526 proposed budget, as we set our, the maximum millage, which is the one mil on the properties within the downtown, as we review the budget with our constituents, gaining feedback, which is what we do annually, and we'll be meeting with our public hearings in September. So, just, that's a very important time for us to really listen and help shape what happens in our downtown by our constituents. So, we've invited our residents and our property owners, our commercial, and our commercial makes up a vast majority of our revenues that come in to be reinvested back into the downtown. And also, just wanted to speak to the Savor the Avenue event, which is one of our signature events in addition to Art and Jazz on the Avenue and our Restaurant Month, but this actually is coming up in September. These are all events that are meant to drive economic vitality and for the economic development of our retail, restaurant, and commercial corridor, engaging our community and the commerce together, and they are meant to be, really, they started back out of a market study that was done in 2006 of how do we drive more retail and restaurant diversity within our downtown area, and these are all programs that have been done as a result of that and continue now to grow and to be signature events for our community and really highlighting the unique culinary scene, the unique small business scene, our fashion scene, things that we have here that we've worked over the many years to just really highlight and move around throughout the downtown so we're not impacting one more the other, and also to shine lights on the neighborhoods that are there. So, that's why we move Art and Jazz around from the set to Pineapple Grove to the beachside and into the core, which has been proven to be very successful. So, I just wanted to reiterate that, and we'll be talking more about that tomorrow night and as we go through in future meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alan Costello, owner of Big Al's Stakes at 450 East Atlantic Avenue and current Chair of the DDA. I'm, oh, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, Madam Clerk. I'm a little buzzed. I went to my dentist today for my, my implant, and I'm still rather drugged. So, I apologize. I have nothing printed and nothing prepared, but I wanted to just tell you how proud I am to be part of the DDA and so proud of the operations of the DDA and what they've done. And every time I drive down Atlantic Avenue at night, the boulevard is beautiful, the trees are lit, the poles are wrapped, our flags on the poles are national and international marketing that we've done for years, the manner in which we've handled the art museum and how it, it just, it's terrific. The amphitheater and how Laura and the team have operated Old School Square and brought it back from being dark to the cultural center of our downtown. I love Delray, and I'm just so happy to be here, and again, I'm a little drugged. So, but I'm concerned, after 54 years of great collaboration and cooperation between the DDA and the city, I feel that we're starting to suffer a little bit in our cooperation. I'm hoping that we will all take a step back and look at what we are and who we are and what our charters say and what our goals are, and work better and more diligently to improve our relationships. And finally, I wanted to wish Commissioner Long really good luck and great success as you move forward and eventually end up running the state. And that's it, guys. Thank you very much.
Bring back home rule when you do that, please.
Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Hi, everybody. Marjorie Waldo from Arts Garage, and I am sadly not a little buzzed. Arts Garage is committed to the residents of Delray Beach and Palm Beach County. We offer amazing performances and gallery exhibits for tourists and locals alike, but we also prioritize our responsibility to the beautiful community that has supported our work for almost 15 years. Our team has designed a variety of accessible programming to reach locals over the years, and I wanted to share with you all of the things we provide our neighbors. Our open mic nights are recurring monthly events for comedy, all arts, and spoken word nights. It's free for performers and only 10 bucks for supporters. The Marshall Family Foundation Gallery and the Black Box Gallery at Arts Garage, always free to view incredible exhibits featuring our region's emerging artists. Heartfelt is a donation drive for our sister nonprofits like Eat Better, Live Better or Cross Ministries. And hopefully, the new friend that I made tonight, our partner program where we provide free tickets to amazing performances for nonprofits who register, our family series which provides free school day matinees, including transportation costs for local public elementary schools, our artist and residence series, free pre-show performances for local seniors, our new senior series launches this fall, pushing free programming into assisted living facilities, serving mobility or safety-challenged seniors. Each center will receive at least two interactive courses each month, improv and movement and drumming. We wrote a grant for America 250 Celebration for the anniversary of our great country. There will be a free performance, there's a grant, but I'm going to try to make it happen anyway, so I'll come door to door and collect dollars. A free performance for veterans and active-duty military. Our paid summer internship program in marketing and a fall and spring internship with our art curator. Off the Wall Series launches this fall and will feature free-to-attend artist talks and panel discussions with professional artists as guest speakers in tandem with emerging artists showcased in our galleries. We launched Out of the Black Box this summer, a theater residency program that offers space and support to theater companies that don't have space of their own, and our volunteer program, which is free to participate, and while volunteering, you receive currency to use for tickets to shows where you don't have to clean up after the show. I hope you are all aware of how grateful Arts Garage is for your support and how seriously we accept our responsibility to pay it forward to our community. Thank you.
You had six minutes to spare.
I don't.
I mean, six seconds. Excuse me, I don't want to say six minutes. You'll use them all, I know.
Good evening, Andrea Bruton, 703 Place Devant, Delray Beach, Florida, and I'm standing here before you today pretty much for the same reason that Mr. Holder stood before you. However, it is my neighbor to the north of me. My neighbor has trees lined up from the front of my property and her property on the property line to the back, and they go as far, as high as probably about 25 feet high. My tool shed is 10 feet off my property line. Her trees have overgrown to where they're causing damage to the top of my shed. I can't get in my shed now because the limbs have grown in front of the door. I was told six months ago that this is going to be handled, and apparently, we have a new co-director, and now I'm being told that nothing can be done until November 8th. And in the midst of hurricane season, I'm concerned about my property. Yes, I've paid to have these trees cut before, that's the Florida state law, but I do know that we have an ordinance here in Delray for vegetation, and it's a hazard, it's a nuisance. We have grass in my backyard about this high. I don't know what's coming out of there, and I have my grandkids planting the backyard as well. So, it's frustrating to have to wait another three months before the city will do anything to this property. Yeah, the elderly, there, there's an elderly couple there. They can't do it, but it's unfair to me to have to live with that and has, have to get the damage to my property or to what's on my property because nobody's taking care of that. It cost me $1,000 to have that, the shrubbery cut from the front to the back because you have to get a scaffold to get up there. And I don't want to have to wait until November 8th to have this done. I want to be able to get in and out of my shed or move freely about my property, about my property without having to worry about what's coming out of those trees or the bushes. My kids call it Jurassic Park. You can't even see the house. It's so much shrubbery around there, you can't see the house. So, I think, I'm hoping that you all will find some sense of urgency to get these trees cut so that I can live in my property.
And what is the address of that property?
707 Place Devant.
707 what?
Place Devant.
Place Devant, okay.
And ladies and gentlemen?
Mr. Moore and I talked about...
We had a discussion just yesterday, so, Ms. Burns?
Mr. Moore and I had a conversation about this on yesterday, and that, that is being taken care of.
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, I thought you had received a phone call. So, that is not waiting until November, so.
So, direction for a path forward is underway, and leadership of the Department of Neighborhood and Community Services has been advised of respective expectations. They'll be in touch with you. Perhaps we can facilitate that at this time.
Okay. Can I ask what that direction is that you're giving staff with respect to this?
To come up with specific approaches regarding the neighbor's property and the overgrowth vegetation.
Right. The problem is, the neighbor, we know who the neighbor is, and she's not mentally equipped, I believe. It, you know, and I don't know if we can do like a community roundup where we can organize and get together. I agree that you should not have to live like that, but I also understand that that individual who used to come to all of our meetings, we all know and love, has a hit, a very, she has a lovely history of contributing to the city, and I think she's just falling ill and doesn't really know.
We're offering various strategies for collaboration to respond amicably, so there's a process in place.
Can you keep us informed so we know what's going on? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get the address, I'll get it anyway. Any other people wanting to, public comment? No? Public comment is closed. We now have the consent agenda. We need to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? No, great. All right, we're now going to the regular agenda, which is, we're starting with the formerly 6I, which is now 7AA, and it's Resolution 175-25. You said you had a question?
Oh, yes, and I think that's for Mr. Dakowitz, but, Mr. Dakowitz, I apologize. I have a question for you regarding 6I formerly, now 7AA, if you don't mind. It is the revenue bond for the water and sewer improvement. Do you mind coming up? Thank you.
Our bond council is also...
I just, what I'm curious about, and I don't think the bond council can answer that question, I think it's for Mr. Dakowitz, is that in our prior presentations, we had indicated we were going up for $140 million at the end of this quarter and $140 million at the end of next year's quarter. This says not to exceed $160, so I'm curious, has our amount changed or is that just, what's? Thank you, if you don't mind.
Jay Glover, Public Financial Management.
Thank you.
Again, Jay Glover from Public Financial Management. We are the city's financial advisor helping with this financing. The $140 million is the amount of the project that is being funded with this financing. That's half of the estimated $280 million project.
Right.
We are also capitalizing interest, which we talked about, I think, during the presentation, such that we don't have to pay any debt service until the project comes online, which is very common for these types of things.
Perfect, thank you very much.
So, that's the additional money above the $140 million.
Got it, appreciate that. It's not in the agenda, so forgive me.
No worries.
I apologize, thank you.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 175-25.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next one is 7BB, and that's formerly 6L.
Six L, yeah.
Funding agreement with nonprofit organization Delray Rocks uses football.
And also, just a simple question, forgive me, I was chatting too much before. What, I didn't see any monetary value in the contract at all. Is that, do we know what that is? Was that updated? I don't...
No.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Sam Metot, Parks and Recreation Director. Just to answer your question about that, there will be a presentation next week on the 19th where the nonprofit organization themselves, the Delray Rocks, will come in and do a presentation and request funding.
So, this is modeled like our other funding agreements where we don't put the monetary value because the nonprofit needs to come before the commission?
And make the request.
And you ultimately decide.
So, we're not committed to any monetary value in this, just that we're willing to engage in agreement?
It's just a contractual agreement so that in the event money is provided, we have the requisite contract.
Perfect, thank you very much. So, I'd like a motion to approve funding agreement with nonprofit organization Delray Rocks.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Sam.
Of course, I'm ready.
Mr. Metot.
Okay, we now have 7CC, which is formerly 6C.
Yeah, I pulled this one. Really just because, I'm totally in favor of it, and I just wanted, since this is another issue where we're defending home, well, I think it's important, and I was hoping, Lynn, you could just kind of briefly walk us through implications of this, of what it means, just so folks kind of understand it.
The actual resolution, what I'm asking you to do, or SB 180?
I think what, what our reaction to SB 180 is, we kind of already went over a lot of the, what it is.
So, the concern, as you heard previously, over SB 180 is, it's very far-reaching, the implications of it, and so initially, we didn't really have a lot of concerns because, as Matt said, it's under an emergency management statute, which you wouldn't think would have implications into our ordinances and comp plan. And so, the concern, and Anthea's team, all the planners in the state and the attorneys of the state, there are concerns that any ordinances that are retroactive over, I think, three years and moving forward another couple of years, anything that overly restricts and burdens a property owner's rights, they can come back. Now, there's a process for it, so they have to give us notice, they have to tell us their objection. We have 10 days to rescind the ordinance, but it's a lot of work, as you know, to do an ordinance, to have to rescind it under the threat of litigation. If we do decide not to rescind it and we move forward with litigation, then if we don't prevail, we would be subject to attorney's fees capped at $250,000. So, Wyserota, who does a lot of our outside legal work, and they're also handling the Form, Form 1 litigation for the city, Form 6, they have reached out to municipalities throughout the state in order to, almost like a class action lawsuit, to preemptively attack this bill and challenge it. There's a lot of issues with it. Like I said, it's, it's under emergency management. When you write a bill, there's single-subject limitations and things like that, so there's a lot of technicalities associated with it. The litigation may amount to nothing because if it goes back to the legislature and they make tweaks that make people feel better about what the true intent is, but the biggest concern is that when you initially read the bill, you don't really think it applies to Delray because it's very... think it applies to Delray because it's very specific. But when you start, and Anthea had to do this, she mapped out the hundred mile radius of all these hurricanes, and it essentially includes the entire state. So while you might feel comfort and read it and think, oh no, this doesn't apply to us, it actually does. And so this is just another, you know, slicing away at your home rule authority as to you, for you to be able to legislate in the best interests of your residents. And so we're going to talk about the zip later, but I do have some concerns about how we're going to move forward, and, you know, we'll have one-on-one conversations with you and educate you a little bit more once the legislative process moves forward. But for this, I thought, I think it's worthwhile to stand with the other municipalities in this litigation and potentially either have it declared unconstitutional or, you know, come up with some type of middle ground that everybody can live with, essentially.
You know, the problem with the first paragraph was clear. It said, talks about, you know, disaster and relief and all the, and then you start, the second paragraph thrown in here, under the emergency management, start talking about any, anything, any property that's involved with this.
Yeah, goes a bit off the rails.
It got very confusing because it's, I think the intent of SB 180 was to truly cover properties that were subject to some danger zone, you know, as a result, but to have the broad stroke of the second paragraph.
Well, like many bills, I think it got written and passed with the best of intentions, and then there are unintended consequences when we actually have to analyze the rollout, which, you know, we're discovering here, and I think a lot of folks are, and like Matt Forrest said, I think there probably will be a glitch bill that gets filed next session to resolve some of these issues.
I think this, I think this lawsuit's going to force them to look at it and say, wait a minute, this really wasn't our intent.
Right, I mean, I think we're already part of the solution by getting into this class action, by pushing back and showing some of the vulnerabilities with this.
I mean, the other option would be to adopt an ordinance, and if we get challenged, we could, we could challenge it through the litigation course. But again, the risk on that is if you don't prevail, there's a significant amount of attorney's fees, and, you know, an attorney seeing that high number of a quarter of a million dollars might want to initiate that litigation to, you know.
Right.
In case they get lucky.
So I'm going to need a motion to approve.
Could I ask a question? Mr. Long, when you were talking to Mr. Forrest before, you alluded to the conservation district. So you're suggesting that we hold off on that? And it's not a district, it's a conservation area, whatever?
I think, I think we need to have further conversations about it. I do think the zip is important because if we do get any type of direction from Tallahassee or from our lobbyists or from the litigation that, you know, it's not as far-reaching, the concerns that we're voicing are really, weren't the legislative intent, then we might be able to move forward. But because of the retroactive and the prospective nature of this bill, I mean, you really can have a lot of issues with ordinances that you even previously adopted. So I know a lot of the concern was that we didn't move fast enough with, you know, declaring a historic district, but candidly, it wouldn't have mattered because of this, the nature of the way that this bill was written.
So this will hold off the conservation, it's going to hold off Frog Alley as well? And you think a historic district wouldn't?
We're going to take each one in a case-by-case.
It may, it may affect all of them.
Right.
Which is, I don't think the intent.
Right, and I have a question. The historic districts have proven, proven out in the court that they have a benefit to the residents such that, you know, the rights of the individual within the district is overridden by the proven benefit to the community. So would you, could you argue that a historic district, at this point, maybe we need to look at historic district versus conservation because it's already been played out in the courts and it's already been proven?
All I'm going to say is that I think from everybody that, Anthea and I have spoken to a lot of colleagues on this, I think the concern is that it's written very broadly. And while that may not be the intent, it's how it's being interpreted right now, and we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we're drafting ordinances that are just going to get challenged a month later and embroil us in serious litigation for something that hasn't even, I don't really want to be the tester of this bill.
It's a disappointment, I'm sorry.
I'd rather move forward with other cities, stand with them.
Right.
I do, I think Matt said that there is another county that's moving forward. They might be the one that tests this for us, but, you know, it's all interpretation. And so, you know, as you know, we might see things one way, you know, plaintiff might see it another way, and the court might see it another way. So we will always leave it up to the commission, we will always work on your direction, but I think for right now, in speaking to our land use attorneys, I think they're kind of taking a wait-and-see approach to see what happens with this, but they are encouraging us to participate in this litigation.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
Need a motion to approve 172-25?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good.
Thank you.
We move on to 7A. Which I forgot what it was now, I remember it at the time.
7A, Duane DeAndre, Human Resources Department, before you today for the consideration of the city manager's merit increase pursuant to his contract. As you know, we distributed the performance evaluation form to each of you, and we did receive each of them with their comments. And Mr. Moore does know the scores, many of you spoke with him, he also has seen all the content in him. The cumulative score for the evaluation was three point three, and that's what's up for consideration tonight.
To the commission. Mr. Long?
Do we typically approve the raise based on the three point three? Would it be three point three percent then? Is that how we do it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's tied to the rating.
I'm in favor.
Second.
Wait, we're not motioning yet.
We're not motioning yet.
We're not motion, we're not motioning yet. If you would like to say something, however, you may say something.
I agree with Commissioner Long.
Fine.
I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Mark, wait, I know it's late, but, you know, I'm in favor.
I'm hungry too, I get it.
Moving along.
I'm in agreement with my two fellow colleagues, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Commissioner Cassal?
I, my evaluation speaks for itself. I spoke to Mr. Moore before. I think I, we spoke candidly and openly, and three point three is what it is. My number was not in range with a pay increase, but I think it's an average, so therefore it is what it is.
I'm done.
Now you can make your motion. Oh, now you're.
So I also wanted to.
You're done?
No, no, I'm going to, I'm just going along with whatever.
Just to add, I think that should be made retroactive to the date of hire.
It always is.
It always is.
It always is. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Retro to his, retro to his annual performance.
So make sure that's on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, it was only pushed, pushed back, but it doesn't affect the start date.
Right.
So we have.
Are you going to make the motion?
Go ahead, I know you're.
No, I'm just.
She wants, she wants a second, so go ahead, make the motion.
I move the approval of a three point three percent raise for the city manager.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, I'm opposed. I apologize.
It's adopted, but four to one.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Resolution.
Very well done, sir.
I'm the one that's the chair, I'm the one that, I, you know, anyway, 7B, 166-25. Henry, you are on. Yes, please read the resolution.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending its budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 by providing for supplemental appropriations in the amounts identified in Exhibit A, repealing all resolutions inconsistent herewith, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Dokowitz.
Yep, combination of two requests. The first is from the Water and Sewer Department. They want to move fifty-two thousand dollars from the capital outlay for software to professional services, so it's just line item transfer within their department. The transfer is to cover the cost of risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan. This is utilities. On October 23, 2018, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency signed the America's Water Infrastructure Act into law. This law requires all community water systems serving more than thirty-three hundred people perform a risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan on their system. These risk and resilience assessments involve assessing the risks of every part of the water system from supply to distribution, including physical, cyber, and financial systems. Communities such as the City of Delray Beach with a population served between fifty thousand and one hundred thousand are required to submit certification of completion of a resubmital of the America's Water Infrastructure Act Risk and Resilience Assessment by December 31, 2025. The emergency response plan certification of completion is due six months after the risk and resilience assessment submittal with a final deadline by June 30, 2026. So they just want to move money from one line to another to accomplish that required activity. The second one is for the municipal golf course. They want to move three hundred thousand dollars from machinery and equipment, other machinery, underground fuel tank to machinery and equipment, other machinery, irrigation pump station. Transfer of appropriations from the underground fuel tank for the Delray Beach Municipal Golf Renovation Course. Reappropriation of three hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of the irrigation pump station. Long lead times require ordering the pump station to ensure installation in time for course construction. So they're trying to coordinate with the raising of funds for the golf course and their capital expenditures down the road.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Burns?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Mark?
No questions.
Commissioner Cassal?
Motion to approve Resolution Number?
No questions, I'm good.
Oh, he said no, I'm sorry, I saw it not.
Y'all, you guys are anxious, don't they?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 166-25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah.
No, no, we're not there, not.
166-25, it's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir.
Did we take the vote?
All in favor, yes, all in favor, everyone aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, sir. 7C.
Resolution Number 133-25, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, approving a waiver of request to Sections 4.14B and 4.14D of the Land Development Regulations to allow construction of a non-workforce housing, single-family residential structure on Lot 19 of the property located at 228 Southeast 3rd Avenue, as more particularly described herein, providing for an effective date and further purposes. And this is quasi-judicial, Mayor.
Thank you very much. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Let me read those rules. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with the quasi-judicial rules. The applicant and the city shall be allowed fifteen minutes each to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each or a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or a group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The city commission and staff and the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made upon personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the numbers of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether or not the project meets the requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. Anyone here wishing to speak on this subject, if you could please stand and be sworn by the clerk?
By the authority that's given me as an owner of the state of Florida, do you smart or harm that the testimony you give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Thank you all very much. Disclosure of ex parte communications. Anyone have any ex parte?
I don't believe so. Maybe whatever's on the server, if there's anything.
If there's anything on the server, none for me.
No? No, no, okay. The project needs to be entered into the record by our illustrious director.
Good evening, Anthea Geniotis, Development Services Director, and I'd like to enter File 2025-006 into the record.
Thank you very much. To the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I'm here on request of a waiver for relief on the waiver of workforce housing requirement related to 228 Southeast 3rd Avenue. Christopher Bernardo, on behalf of the petitioner, Raymond Sedriss, Senior, the property owner. So a little background of the location of the property. 228 Southeast 3rd Avenue is located in the Osceola Park Residential Subdivision. It is located within the Lynn's Addition to Osceola Park, which is a 1913 plat as an addition to the original Osceola Park plat. The property is located south of Atlantic Avenue, east of the railroad tracks in the Osceola Park neighborhood. So here's a closer look at the view of the property. 228 Southeast 3rd Avenue is in the R1A Single Family Residential District. Its current use is a single-family home. The home on the property was built in 1930. It's an eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven-square-foot, single-family home. The structure is in significant disrepair. The home is near inhabitable, electrical. The repair costs of the home exceed the cost of saving the home. The structure is in need of demolition and redevelopment. So here's a snapshot of the survey of the property. This, this lot is a lot of record as it is defined in the Land Development Regulations. It is Lot 19 of Block 87 of Lynn's Addition to Osceola Park. It's got a slight jog of about a foot and a half towards the south. But what's remarkable about, about the property is the location of the structure. As you can see, the structure sits on the rear lot line of this property. The structure is about a foot and a half off of the, off of the south lot line and almost a hundred feet off of the road. It's a very oddly positioned structure. In fact, you'll see that there's a shed located on the north side. The setbacks are over here, located at about a foot and a half jog into Lot 20. And there's your hundred-foot setback. Lot 20, Lot 20's landowner very recently has voiced some complaints to our client about the location of the structure. Again, the real concern here is in the rear setback. So this is a photograph of the, of the rear alley on the property. The structure is the orange on the left, on the right, sorry, of the screen. And as you can see, what you, you see before you are called safety ballards. Those were installed at the city's expense because of the location of the structure. The structure is on the property line, and as you can see, some of the utilities of that structure actually, actually extend into the alleyway. It is a safety hazard for not only the community but for passersby, and as a result, the city did, did install those ballards. I don't know the exact timing of the installation, but they exist presently. The property owner that has voiced the complaints is the property owner that is, where the fence is located on the right, right side of the screen. The property, his property line comes right up within a foot and a half to the structure there. So I think it's important first to point out the relevance to the community. Osceola Park plat, as you may have heard on the several redevelopment projects that are going in there, is a plat that's routed with fifty-foot lots. These are originally platted lots. Some of the lots are platted at forty-six feet. That is, as they existed on the original, 1913, and some of the Osceola Park plats 1913, the Lynn's Addition was later that same year. These were very small platted lots that exist to this day. So this is Lynn's Addition. The location of the property at issue is in with the green. And as you can see, what's very relevant to the request today is that the four neighboring lots, which are to the north of 228 Southeast, I'm sorry, that says fourth half, it's actually third half, that's just to the north of 228, those are all platted 45-foot frontage on our lot. The four lots which are to the north are platted at 43 and 46.8-foot of frontage. The three lots that are on the neighboring east-west avenue there are also at 45-foot of frontage. And most of the remaining lots of Lynn's Addition are 50-feet of frontage. So as these lots here is in aerial, like property appraisal is aerial, as the parcels exist today, many of these single-family homes in the immediate vicinity are 50 feet. The subject property is in the blue. So let's look at the subject property. On your left, there are some of the details. It's 46.5-foot of the rear lot. The comparison to the lot just to the south, this is the neighbor that has voiced some several complaints. His lot also has, given the jog from our subject property, his lot has a under 50-foot of frontage. So he's had some improvements done to his home. It is a 48.5-foot rear lot width. He's got 50-foot of frontage. The comparison, it's a 60,000-square-foot lot area on our lot. The neighbor's at 6586. So what are we asking for today? Well, all of the originally platted lots of Osceola Park and Lynn's Addition are lots of record, and therefore, under the LDRs are buildable. The LDRs require that a lot of record of less than 50-foot of frontage require a waiver to build non-workforce housing. 228, and I'm sorry, that's a misprint, it's fourth half, it's third half, 228, third half, like many of the neighboring lots, is under 50-foot of frontage. So what we're asking for today is a waiver of that workforce housing requirement for this lot. The applicable development standards, we start with 414, which we just referenced, allows this buildable lot as a lot of record, gives the following limitations. 414B states that the frontage must be 50 feet. 414D states that it could be as low as 40 feet, but it may be used for workforce housing, not shall. So what we're asking for is under 2411, which are the standards for a waiver. The findings for today that we're asking and we're presenting are that the request shall not adversely affect the neighboring area, shall not significantly diminish the provision of public utilities, shall not create an unsafe condition, and does not result in special privilege in that the same waiver would be granted under similar circumstances on the other property. I want to first address B. There's no effect on any public utilities. In fact, if anything, this is a positive to public utilities, considering the alleyway as a public utility function. So despite its like character in similar circumstances, what we're referring to first is finding A. It shall not adversely affect the neighboring area. The neighboring area is routed, as we've just shown you, with similarly situated lots. In fact, the lot just to the south has a rear width of 48.5 feet. Finding C says shall not create an unsafe situation. The homeowner is seeking to raise the existing structure, which will remove what is a significant hazard in that area and the need for those ballards. The demolition of the home will take away, and the new structure that's built there will clearly follow setback requirements that are not, this is a non-conforming structure there. Those setbacks have lots of reasons. One of them is safety. This is an obvious one here. Finding C, shall not create an unsafe condition. Again, an overview of those, that rear setback, which is at zero, and the south setback, which is essentially at zero if not for the jog of the 1.5 feet. So finding D does not result in a grant of a special privilege. This is another snapshot of the neighbor. The neighbor has a 48.5-foot rear lot width and a 50-foot frontage. His lot size is similar. I've presented a number of those lots throughout the Osceola Park neighborhood, which have been both raised and redeveloped of a very similar size of the lot. In fact, December 10, 2024, this commission did consider this exact waiver for another neighboring lot. So I, here, under resolution 226-24, 302 Southeast 4th Street was brought before this commission with the precise and the exact request that we have here. The interesting thing about this lot is that that lot, the relief that was granted, that situation was created by the owner. That lot was a double lot, as it's shown here. It was split, the lot was split. This commission did grant this exact request, despite the fact that the lot was created. The lot here that's before you tonight, this is not a situation that's been created by this landowner. This landowner is seeking to redevelop a badly needed home, and the failure to grant this waiver would result in a deficiency and a special privilege that, in fact, has been granted to not only its immediate neighbors and immediate neighborhood, but specifically 302 Southeast 4th Street under resolution 226-24. So what are we asking for again? The requested relief is a waiver of the workforce housing requirement for the lot, which has less than 50-foot of frontage, and to allow the development of the residence as is permitted throughout Osceola Park in conformity with the character of the neighborhood. Thank you. Available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernardo. To the city.
Okay, I only have a few slides to share. I think you're relatively familiar with this condition that we find in certain areas of the city, where the plat is sometimes, the original plat going back to, I'm sure I have the date on here somewhere. Thank you, Mr. Bernardo. We've done this a few times, so, okay. This is the lot, I think, to, while we need to consider the unique conditions of this lot, it is under its own ownership, and while possibly in the past, this was an ancillary building to a larger parcel, right now, they're under separate ownership. It had a building on it before. It is a non-conforming building that has required an immense amount of public infrastructure as a result of its non-conforming status. So that said, the lot itself, this isn't a new lot. It is over here. It is Lot, what is it, 19, on Block 87, but also Lots 16, 17, and 18 are also substandard and don't meet the 50-foot minimum standard. So initially, you know, when the city had a citywide rezoning back in the 90s, they moved all single-family to a minimum of 60 feet wide, paying no attention to the plat east of 95 at all, which was not done that way, largely in certain older parts of the city. The workforce housing regulation was intended to make developable, sort of these remnant pieces that had never been developed, so that here's an incentive, this piece of land that you couldn't develop before, now we're going to let you develop, and it can be workforce housing. Now, to be clear, the city still has a tremendous need for workforce housing. That hasn't changed, right? However, when you look at an older plat like this, this was the incremental ownership that was anticipated. Some people bought two lots side by side and had a bigger property and built a bigger house, but not always. So this is the situation in Osceola Park. We have had properties that have asked to split and go back to their original lot configuration and based on the provisions of the code, when they're at least 50 feet wide, that's happened. It's a certain amount of densification that has happened. So in this case, you know, we're back to, if you've separated them and it's less than 50 feet, you're not supposed to build anything on it. And then we have the, but, if you want, if you have a lot that's at least 40 feet, it's an original lot of record, you can do workforce housing. So we have struggled with a couple of conditions. One, we have a rule that doesn't neatly fit all of our single-family neighborhoods on the east side in some instances. But the other is, we are seeing densification, where people have taken these properties that they have bought two lots side by side, and then they separate them, and they want to build two houses. So we've had to look at both of those conditions. In this case, at this point, the property is under ownership. It's a 40-foot-wide lot, and it has a building on it. It's not like it was leftover, it was, you know, the yard, and now they want to put a new house on it. It has a structure on it. So in order to redevelop that structure, we have to make a decision whether they can redevelop it as market rate or as workforce housing. Every time we have brought these issues to the board, I can't think of one time where it has been sent, well, there was one where it was torn down, but I can only think of one that was done without permits, where it didn't go well for them. But by and large, the approvals have been to let somebody redevelop the property. Not every old house is historic. It's not always indicative of preservation, and so if we're going to let any of the houses that are built on these substandard lots redevelop over time, this is the rule that's going to keep bumping up against it. So again, the standards that you use for this particular case, where you're on a block in Osceola Park that has lots that are also more narrow than, or as narrow or more than this property, I think it comes into consideration the fact that there's an existing house on the property, or an existing, you know, unit, dwelling unit on the property, comes into consideration. And then ultimately, is it going to affect the neighborhood? The neighborhood has varying lot sizes throughout in its original plat. They've been combined and developed individually. It's an organic neighborhood, and it's part of what makes Osceola Park charming, right? It will not, honestly, I think that allowing the redevelopment of this property is actually going to improve public facilities, because all of those very expensive ballards that Public Works had to put into that alley would no longer be needed. They're already there, but at least we don't have to worry about protecting a building from having a car leave the road if this is redeveloped. So the lot itself is in existence, it's not creating a new situation. And then ultimately, is it a special privilege or not when this neighborhood has so many lots of varying sizes that have been allowed to redevelop individually? So, you know, I think that once you've made a decision for Mr. Bernardo, because this is probably the second one we've done with this, there were other issues in the neighborhood as well, but I do want to circle back on some considerations that we could take in terms of not having to hear these individually all the time moving forward, depending on if you support it. So, so.
Administrative approval.
And that's it. I'm here if you have questions.
Thank you very much. This portion of the meeting is now open to the public. If there's any member of the public who wish to speak on this application, please come up to the lectern, give your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes. You have been sworn, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Christina Morrison, 1,000 Lowry Street in downtown Delray Beach. Well, here we are, the rubber's meeting the road. Our city needs workforce housing. This area of Osceola Park that backs up to that street along the railroad tracks is a perfect location for workforce housing. That's why this was developed. That's why this code is in effect for these small lots to be developed for workforce housing, so we continue to have a diverse downtown. We're turning into a millionaire's row downtown. This is one of the few, I'm sorry.
I didn't speak, somebody in the audience did.
Okay. This is the, this is the perfect area to create the diversity we need downtown, to have some affordable areas downtown. So I hope that you refuse this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none? Cross-examination or rebuttal between staff, applicant, and/or witness?
I mean, I think the only question that I think might be helpful to the commission is whether the property was together and then it was separated, with the outbuilding being recently transferred to another owner, without maybe realizing that the lot would be limited? Or is it just always?
Yeah, I think this lot...
I don't know what the sales price was.
Sure.
Not price, the point.
Sure. And I attempted to point that out as a comparison of the other lot, but you're correct. The, this lot was, the owner, my client, bought that lot as it existed. He did not create that scenario. He didn't parcel out that lot. In fact, I think it's very relevant as the needs of the community, and I wish that owner would have come tonight, but the owner, to the immediate right, has been pleading for my client to take some action on the lot. Again, it's more so for the ballards, both as creating a situation for the neighbor, but also it's the actual, I think it's extremely relevant, is the location of that structure. It's a very unique structure. You can see from this photo, it's in the far corner of the property. So this is, I don't know when that was built, but that was not created by my client. My client has owned this property, its current condition in that lot configuration.
Thank you very much. To the commission. Commissioner Markert?
No further questions.
Commissioner Casal?
No, I support this, and I agree, we're seeing this. And we made those regulation changes where we allowed you some, a foot or something, not even, maybe a few inches, but I think we need to revisit that. But yes, I would, I'll support this under the circumstances presented. Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Yeah, I'm in agreement, and I think Ms. Morrison made some good comments, but I think under these very specific circumstances, we need to encourage that properties like this get fixed and incentivize that. But I do want to see, how do we address this going forward? Maybe some kind of administrative approvals in order, or some change to the code. I don't know what that looks like, but I, yeah, I want to continue that conversation.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes, same as my colleagues. I, you know, we've done this before, and we've had a couple, and we will have more. The lots in Osceola Park and the set are not created equal. So I'm looking forward to making some changes that, you know, we won't have to have these come before. And it met all the marks. It does not affect the neighboring areas or the public facilities, or no special privilege. There are many other lots in that neighborhood, the same, and it doesn't create an unsafe situation, so I'll be in support of it. Thank you.
Well, I am going to echo what my colleagues have said, having been on that side, trying to come every time to deal with what are going, which are like, whether it's four inches short, you bring it to the commission, whether it's this. I feel very differently with respect to Ms. Morrison about already existing platted lots as opposed to a self-inflicted wound. And so, in these situations where you're dealing with these older neighborhoods, which had anyone had any foresight, would have said, except, we don't mean to include these. So I'm going to, I'm supportive of this waiver request. I do want you to take into consideration whether you should be bringing these things back on this, which were already existing platted lots in neighborhoods. I want to be specific, not just in any particular neighborhood, but in neighborhoods where this is, you know, the norm, and the property doesn't include a historic structure. So if you have all those elements, I think that staff should have the ability to just go ahead and, you know, inform us if you want to, but I mean, to make that decision and move forward.
Or maybe it adds to like a separate list, similar to an appealable, where we just see that it's occurred, and we know what's going on, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, maybe, I don't know. You'll have to work out the mechanics, but I mean, you don't need to, I understand.
Actually, and we have not spoken in a really long time, actually, but to your point, I think that the Assistant Director, who is just an excellent researcher, her historic preservation background helps very well, is that the except for, like, platted areas prior to the citywide zoning date for already developed properties that just want to redo their house, and the house isn't worth saving, they want to build a different, you know?
Right, which is a situation really here.
So we will start, and lucky for us, for Senate Bill 180, this would be removing process, so this is something staff can get behind, do, so, with some confidence. So we will look over the past decisions and try to find the tenor of the decisions.
Just come back with something sensible, because there is a sensible solution here without, you know. So I need a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number 133-25.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Markert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Casal?
Yes.
Deputy Vice Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Carney?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Before we get to 7D, this is just a housekeeping thing. In all the excitement for Dawn English, I'm not sure we actually adopted the resolution giving her the, did we? I'm not sure we...
Give it to you, you can.
I mean, so I would like a resolution, I'd like someone to make a resolution to adopt a resolution 122-25?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Dawn, you've been recognized twice. There you go.
[laughing].
She has.
Yes, good for her.
So 7D, oh, there you are.
Resolution number 176-25, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, recognizing that the City of Delray Beach is considering amendments to the city's land development regulations with respect to aggregation of parcels, demolition of buildings, or façades, and architectural style changes on certain properties, zones, central business district, located along East Atlantic Avenue, as more particularly described herein, extending the pending ordinance doctrine previously invoked by the City Commission, restating that the city will defer the processing and approval of all applications related to aggregation of parcels, demolition of buildings, or façades, and architectural style changes on certain properties, zones, central business district, located along East Atlantic Avenue, during the pendency of the city's consideration of these amendments, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and further purposes.
Thank you very much.
This is a zoning in progress, Mayor.
This is the zoning in progress.
Extension.
And the impetus behind extending this was, at the May 6 meeting, we discussed that we tend to do major moves like this during season, when more of our residents are here and able to participate, so we would want to move the public hearings into the fall, rather than hold them over the summer. And we will be regrouping on Senate Bill 180 with each of you individually as well, for both this district and for our alley.
I had, I had asked, had at length a conversation on this matter with, with the city attorney, and I don't know whether we're going to be able to do it or not, but if we don't do this, we've lost our opportunity to do it. So, I want to at least keep it in play, because it was done prior to the statute, and, you know, maybe it makes a difference, maybe it doesn't make a difference, but at least it keeps our options alive on doing something here at this, at this juncture.
I agree with that.
Just to keep in the restrictions, because I don't want, you know.
And just for the record, this would expire February 13th, 2026.
Thank you. Want me to make a motion, Mayor?
Need a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 176-25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item 7E, discussion concerning the filling of the vacancy created by the resignation of Vice Mayor Long.
Y'all can't wait to get rid of me.
Oh, my God. I got a bus ticket for you right outside. There you go. Go to Tallahassee, it says Tallahassee on it, so there you are.
So, this is just a discussion item. We received a letter of resignation from, resigned to run, under-resigned to run Florida statute, so it would be effective December 8th, 2025. Section 3.8 of our charter does discuss the process for, there's no replacement, but, you know, for the person who would succeed you. And essentially, the commission, we're just seeking direction, so the person would fill the role until the organizational meeting in March. We are having an election this year, so it, it falls in line with that. As you know, that seat's already been open, and there are individuals who are seeking to succeed Commissioner Long, but the, the replacement would only be from essentially December 8th through the organizational meeting in March, which I don't have that date in front of me. So, we just wanted to have a discussion now so that you could direct staff. My understanding is in the past, it's been treated like, almost like a board appointment, where we'll open up something online, we'll receive applications until a certain date. Those applications would be brought before the commission. You can either, like you do with board appointments, nominate someone and vote. You could do public interviews if you wanted to, however you want to handle it. We just need some direction so that we can start planning ahead.
This actually happened to me, and when Christina Morrison was appointed to fill the slot back in 2013, was it, 2013? And we had to process, and the only thing, restriction that we had was if you are candidate, that we restricted, that, we weren't going to give anybody running for office like a leg up in the seat by, you know, technically do it. That was the only thing, but it was a process whereby there were people who applied, and were selected. But it's up to the, I mean, I, I, I mean, I think it's a better idea, because I'm getting letters already.
Me too.
So, you know, and I don't know who, I'd like to have a list to look from, because to make sure, because at least if you're crazy enough to put your application in and do this job, then you certainly should be.
Staff would be able to vet them for you.
Yeah, so, I mean, what's, what is the consensus of, of the, of the commission?
I'm, I'm in agreement with, with the recommendations that the city attorney made here in this memorandum. And with that, with what you said, if someone is running, you know, that, that person will not be considered, so.
But, I don't want to, yeah.
But you'll have the benefit of the qualifying date having already passed, so you'll know. It won't be like a situation where someone can say they're not going to.
Yeah, I don't, well, I don't know. I mean, are we going to try to wait with respect, I mean, are we going to try to wait till he's gone, and then we do the appointment? Are we going to do this, or are we going to make this appointment?
I feel this is like if you lose a pet, and like, there's a waiting period before you ask someone if they're going to replace the pet, you know? Like, isn't there like a grieving period?
Don't you remember that Rob, that Robin Williams movie, when she said, "Are you trying to sell me a car at my husband's funeral?" And so, whatever, well, I forgot the name of Cadillac again, I think it was called.
So, the only restriction is that if we do it while the vice mayor's still with us, he can't vote on any of this.
Right.
So, are we going to, what's your sense? Do we wait till he resigns and then do it?
I think we have to wait till the qualifying period is over, just to confirm that.
That's fine, okay. I'm happy to do that.
Do we know when that is?
It's October some, no, November something. I looked it up.
So, I was going to recommend, so maybe 30 days before December 8th, you would close the applications.
That sounds good.
So, November 8th would be the deadline to submit an application online via our portal.
Okay.
That would bring us to whatever the meeting in November is. The commission can decide at that point, depending on how many applications you received, do you want to, at the second meeting in November, have public interviews, or do you just want to nominate and vote? It'll give you time, because I think you want to see how many people apply.
Right.
Do we want public interviews? So, we can decide that.
You decide.
No, we can decide, I don't want to decide that.
So, maybe we'll close it off at November 8th.
November 8th, that's a Saturday, so maybe Friday, November 7th?
Whatever you want.
Can I like hang out and have popcorn or something while you guys are doing this?
Yes, you will not be sitting out here.
You can have a cold slushy, you're on every speaking head.
I know. So, our meetings in November, actually, one of them needs to be moved, because if we have an election November 4th, we can't have a meeting on that day. So, right now, we have a meeting.
Now, people.
So, we have, oh, my calendar says there's an election. So, November 18th. Do you want to make the consideration then? And then in December, if you want public hearings or whatever, you can do it then.
All right, well, so, yeah, move it, I guess, is that, is everybody on the, in board?
So, the November 18th meeting, we'll put all the applications.
Okay, so that we have the, essentially, a motion by, by Commissioner Burns with all the stuff she said. Do I have a second?
Second.
Qualifying period opens at noon on Monday, November 3rd, to 12 noon on Friday, November 21st.
So?
So, the qualifying period concludes on November 21st.
Okay.
I think that by the time you receive this.
You'll know.
You'll know. And somebody really should apply, because you're giving the direction here that if you're going to run for the seat, you won't be considered. I mean, you don't have to consider the person.
Fine, that's fine. Okay, so, do we have consensus moving forward?
The 18th, right.
So, November 18th, the applications will be on the agenda.
Yes, okay.
So, do we need a vote, or we just got consensus and we're going forward?
That's fine.
That's perfect, okay. All right, nominations for appointment to the Board of Adjustment based on the rotation system. We have, one needs to be, the three, the three need to be qualified, and one needs to be an at-large member. The first selection will be made by Vice Mayor Long.
Yeah, I'm going to nominate, to reappoint Jesse Schloesser, and apologies if I mispronounced the name.
Okay, who's qualified.
Qualified, yeah.
Okay. Need a motion to approve.
I think, Mayor, you can just.
What?
It's a nomination, so you can just call the ruler.
Oh, that's, that's right, you don't need a second on that, that's right. Call the roll.
However you want to do it, all in favor?
Oh, no, all in favor?
Sorry.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, fine. It's now Commissioner Casal.
I guess I'll pick Brenda Cullenin.
Brenda Cullenin, okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Danielle Landz.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'm going to postpone mine, because my two choices were selected, so I'm not going to do that.
That's cool.
Anyway. Nominations for appointments to the Planning and Zoning Board based on the rotation system. There, you have, we need three qualified members to serve for, for the term, so there's a lim, there's a limited list. I don't know if you know each one's who's qualified.
I do, but I would, I had a question on this. I remember Mr. Frankel, Mr. Patton's qualified. He's developed homes, he's, you know, I don't know why he's not listed as qualified on here, except maybe he didn't, but I remember when Mr. Frankel selected him and said he's qualified, and he is. I mean, he's got a, developed duplexes, homes, he's got a very knowledgeable on the LDRs.
Yeah, but qualified, it's based on, like, what your job is or something?
But he's, he's been a developer, I mean, that's what he does. He buys properties, develops, sells them. He just did a duplex in the historic district, and it was beautiful, I saw it. So, I don't know why he, I don't know if he needs to fix his application, but he's qualified.
That's a problem.
I don't think we define developer, so.
Huh?
I mean, frankly, you know, you want qualified people on this board.
I do.
But this isn't the Historic Preservation Board where it's going to have some adverse effects if you don't have qualified persons.
Okay, so I'm selecting Mr. Price Patton, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's done?
Thank you.
Who's, who's next?
Commissioner Burns.
Yep.
Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
And, or appoint Judy Malika.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the third is?
You.
Me. I am going to appoint Mr. Jim Chard, who's qualified.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's done. We now have the appointments to the Site Plan Review and Appearance Board. Who do we have on this?
Vice Mayor Long. Commissioner Casal. Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Okay, so we have the Vice Mayor Long.
I'm going to nominate Nicholas Coppola.
Nicholas Coppola, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Commissioner?
Okay, this is one where we need qualified members too, right? Oh, two qualified and two at-large.
Two qualified and two at-large.
I'm going to do Ms. Lloyd. Oh, did we need to vote on Mr. Coppola?
We just did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to select Cynthia Lloyd.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Vice Mayor Burns?
I'm going to nominate Annette Gray.
Second.
That's mine too. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to postpone this one too, because all three were taken, so this is good. So, at least next time, I'll be the only one, so then no one will be able to take my, my things away from me.
It's one way to look at it.
Won't take your things away.
Yes, I'll tell you. All right, so, we're, we're, now we have the nomination for the Visions 2035 Steering Committee. Let's start with seat number one, Commissioner Markert.
I'd like to nominate Paul Cannon.
Okay, you got five. That's a good one.
I got what?
Five appointees.
Oh, hold on. Back up. I have a list.
Like a Ginsu knife, you can take from your list, and you, this is the one where you can take it from this.
All right, here we go. I can do my own, okay.
Why don't you give us all five?
I'm going to give you all five. Mitch Katz, Shelley Petrolia, Kelly Barrett, Roger Coop, and Sandy Zeller.
That's more than five.
Great, we don't need motions to approve, right? These are the, these are direct appointments.
We'll do them all at the end, but I'm sorry, isn't it just five? That was six.
No, he did five.
No.
Oh, you started with Paul Cannon, that's right.
Paul Cannon, no.
Okay.
He's a come, he's a go, Paul, wherever you are.
I love him.
Okay, so it's Katz, Petrolia, Barrett?
Roger Coop and Sandy Zeller.
Thank you.
Are we all set?
Yep.
Seat number two.
All right, I'm going to nominate Jim Chard, Chuck Ridley, Judy Malika, Christina Morrison, and Max Zengage.
Okay. You got all those down? Whoever taken, Madam Clerk, okay. Seat number three, Commissioner Casal.
Okay, I'm going to do, okay, now, Price Patton.
Can you put your mic closer, it's already here, Patton.
Price Patton, Gary Iliopolis, Lori Durant, Harvey Brown, and Howard Ellingsworth.
Good choices, two of them are mine.
Did you talk to them?
Okay. All right, seat number four.
I'll talk to her.
That would be Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Carolyn Young, Herman Stevens, Kyle Holder.
Hang on one second, is it, I want to just interrupt, if you don't mind, we, working or living in Delray, or just living in Delray?
I think you have to live in Delray.
Because I don't think Mr. Herman doesn't live here.
The, I thought we were going by property owner, I thought it was property owner.
Property, oh, you mean his building, he owns his building. Okay, perfect, I adore him, so I'm good with him, I just want to make sure we're in line. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Thank you for checking upon me.
I'm checking on myself and everybody. I'm a checker.
Okay, I'm going to start over.
So, start over.
Ms. Carolyn Young.
Yes.
Herman Stevens.
Right.
Kyle Holder.
Yeah.
Colson Zumar.
Oh, nice.
And Byron Jones.
Yeah, I like Byron.
Okay.
Fabulous.
It's up to me.
I'm sorry, can I just, just for the record?
Oh, you repeat them, yeah, go ahead.
So, it can, well, I was just going to say, qualifications for a board membership in our code, member shall be resident of or own their own property in the city, own a business within the city, officer, director, manager of a business within the city, or obviously a resident.
So, they all meet, meet the, Mr. Stevens certainly has an office in the city.
Mm-hmm.
And now it's up to me, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm appointing former Mayor Jay Alpern, former Assistant City Manager Bob Barzinski, the President of the Rotary Rita Reina, the former Head of the Historic Society John Miller, and my Palm Trail buddy Gail Clark. So, now, every, all the names are in.
Yeah.
We need one big motion to approve all the names that were nominated.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
La la, good.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, now that you've made these appointments, I'd like to offer a bit of housekeeping via my report to you all. Next week, we'll outline the path forward in terms of working with the consultant selected for this purpose, Raftellus, to assist in terms of connecting everyone and what the steps will be. Mr. Mayor, if I may, now that you've made these appointments, I'd like to offer a bit of housekeeping via my report to y'all, next week we'll outline the path forward in terms of working with the consultant selected for this purpose, Raftellus, to assist in terms of connecting everyone and what the steps will be, so I hope to have that summary to y'all all week from this Friday as part of my weekly report, as well as subsequent meetings to be scheduled, so thank you.
Um, and, you know, we had talked previously, and I think I brought it up, um, but we brought, continued this on, I mean, we would expect that our, I would expect that our nonprofit partners are involved in the process, and the CRAs involved in the process, and we, there's a whole list out, looking back at other visioning of all the organizations that were involved, but if you can get that information, how this is going to be laid out with a little more detail, like...
That would be part of the process, Commissioner, so of course, and as the SS A fully public engagement, they will have that opportunity to connect in that regard as well.
Perfect.
But again, now that this direction has been offered, another piece of clarification, typically the City of Delray Beach, we host the annual goal-setting sessions.
Yeah.
We discussed this months ago, in lieu of a goal-setting session that's typically held on an annual basis, this is the exercise for 2025, likewise, I anticipate in 2026, we'll be back at a place of having the annual goal-setting exercises, so...
Thank you.
Just to be clear, and that was a commitment having been made earlier in the year as we engaged this process, so more information will be forthcoming a week from Friday.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
That's exciting.
So, and you're gonna get, when the Steering Committee's gonna meet, and we're gonna have, you're gonna provide all that to us, Greg, because we need to give them a save the date kinda thing, so that we make sure that everybody...
Yes, sir, Raftellus and I, my office will be again coordinating in the next few days.
Leave it in your good hands.
Thank you.
Okay, seven J nomination for appointment to the Historic Preservation Board. This is based on the rotation system, it's Deputy Vice Mayor Burns and me, so Deputy Vice Mayor Burns, they have to be qualified, so...
This is the one that matters.
This is the one.
This is the one that, in order to get matching grants, we have to ensure that the composition has the requisite number of qualified members.
Now, by my reading of this list, it appears that there are only two that are qualified?
I don't have the list, somebody took it.
Yeah, it's two.
Yes, there's two.
Do you want it back? I stole it from her this morning, so I mean...
It's Benjamin Baffler.
It's in our materials.
And Peter Dwyer.
Yeah.
That's the T G.
Yeah, it's Dwyer and Baffler, I need it back though, cause otherwise I won't remember.
So, yes, according to your list, there are two qualified applicants.
I'll nominate Benjamin Baffler.
Uh, second?
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye, let me have the list again, who's the other one I'm nominating?
It is, um...
Peter Dwyer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, congratulations, both of you.
Thank you.
Alright, now, the seven K nomination for appointment to the Downtown Development Authority Board, based on the rotation system, is an appointment of one tax-qualified member, and this is important, we've had this before.
Well, Mayor, actually, I didn't have a chance to, um, talk to you about this, so the reason why this was deferred the last time when I was out, was because I needed to ensure that the qualifications of the current board members was accurate, and so as it stands right now, they have more than four tax-qualified, so that leaves Commissioner Burns in the position where she can appoint either a tax-qualified person or an at-large.
Okay, so you...
Nominate Anthony Barber.
Oh, Anthony Barber.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. He has that place on West Atlantic.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I've met him. Public Art Advisory Board, based on the rotation system, this is you again, you're just, you're just crushing it. You're just, you are, you are taking over here.
Public art, I had my personality.
You know, if the budget goes off, it goes to the next person.
Commissioner Burns, Commissioner Burns.
Okay, I have it, yes. Um, Lark.
Keeler.
Keeler Lark?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
We talked about it before.
I'm sorry?
I'm not saying a word, I just...
Any opposed? Okay.
Aye.
Alright, we're now at the portion of the meeting which are public hearings. Members of the public will be allowed to speak on each of these items, or actually, these are first readings, correct?
No, sir, these are public hearings.
Well, there's a second hearing, okay, they, there will be, they'll speak on these things, okay. So approval of Resolution fifty-seven dash twenty-five, our stormwater utility assessment.
A resolution of the City Commission.
So this is Missy Barletto, sorry?
Do you have any reading?
Didn't I just read it? Oh, no, you can read the whole resolution if you want.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, establishing a budget for the stormwater utility system, establishing rates for stormwater management assessments for each parcel within the benefited area, other than non-assessed property, providing for a public hearing, providing for the certification and adoption of the stormwater assessment rule, in accordance with Chapter fifty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barletto.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Missy Barletto, Public Works Department, um, this is the annual presentation of the stormwater assessment role, um, tonight we'll be asking you to approve Resolution fifty-seven twenty-five, which establishes the annual budget for the stormwater utility system, establishes rates for stormwater management assessments, certifies and adopts the tax rule. So changes that are reflected in the tax rule, um, as you're adopting them, include, we have provided exemptions for both governmental and certified religious-based organizations at the Commission's direction, we have amended some of the issues that arose last year in the, the calculation of, of common space for condominiums and, um... And cooperatives to clarify that, so that it's easier for the condominiums and cooperatives to, to be assessed, they have to be assessed on an individual basis, you can't assess them to just the HOA. And then we've also included the rate increase that was just approved in June. So with the June rate increase, the, this tax rule assessment will result in just over seven million dollars in revenue for the stormwater system, that's an increase of nearly three million dollars over last year, those, um, those revenues will be used to pay for the administration of the stormwater plane, um, program, including salaries, the facilities that, where the people work, operating expenses for the work crews that keep the storm drains clear, and, and, and make sure that the water is flowing appropriately, um, capital outlay for capital improvement projects, and debt service. This is the slide you saw back in June, um, you approved the increase of the, the annual stormwater rate for those residents who live in Tier One, their stormwater assessment this year is only going to go up twenty-six dollars to sixty-two dollars and fifty-three cents, that's what they'll see on their, their tax bill, that amount in this, this rate structure is still less than the amount that they were paying three years ago. The vast majority of the people who pay into the stormwater utility assessment are in the second tier, which includes impervious area on their lot between two thousand and five thousand square feet, and their, um, increase in fee this year is gonna go up sixty-two dollars and twenty cents to a total of a hundred and forty-eight dollars, so, so starting with that tier, everybody will pay a little bit more than they did in the original, um, rate structure. So to, to give you a graphic representation of how our population is rep, represented, the orange area up there is the Tier Two residential area, it is by far the largest portion of, of, um, of our residents in the city, they, that Tier Two comprises about fifty percent of all residential units, the Tier One units is about thirty percent, so between those two, Tier One and Tier Two, that's eighty percent of the residential, um... Payers into the stormwater utility assessment. So this, this will show you by, um, by property class, more so than by residential, the, um, Tier One contributes about six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to the overall total, the Tier Two, which again is fifty percent of the residences, about two point four million dollars into the total, and commercial properties, which is represented on this graph in blue, contribute, contribute about two point two million dollars to the overall total. This is a very quick snapshot of the capital projects that we're looking at, the ones that we're working on this year are shown in the first column, we will continue working on those same projects for probably the next three years, there are several of them that are very large projects, and then starting in twenty twenty-eight, we'll start addressing some of the other issues that are, um, highlighted in our stormwater master plan as potential problem areas, but they are not actually experiencing problems now, we just know that they will in the future. And that is my very quick presentation, and I thought you might appreciate that.
We do appreciate it, um, comments to the Commission, Commissioner Casal?
Thank you for the presentation, no, I mean, we previously agreed to do this, so this is a stage in the process, um, and I just wanna say thank you, it's always lovely when a resident gets up to the podium during public comments and, and says something nice about our staff, not a surprise, but thank you for always representing us so, so well, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burns?
I have no questions, thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Mark?
As always, thank you, very clear and thorough, and you're, you're awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Current Commissioner Long. Temporary.
Borrowed time up here.
I couldn't help myself, I really, I killed it.
So, uh, no questions, thank you, Missy.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, I can only say that I wish we'd done this before, and kind of, he's the pain for the existing people, but this has gotta be done, and we've all agreed to it, and I support it as well, so I need a motion, um, this is a public, excuse me, this is a public hearing. If there are any members of the public wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come to the lectern, give your name and address for the record, you will each have three minutes. Seeing none, public comment is closed.
Motion to approve Resolution five-seven dash two-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is done, good.
Thank you very much.
We now have the CBDG, uh, presentation by Ms. Pryor. This is also a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me here tonight to talk about CBDG, it's my favorite thing to talk about on a Tuesday night.
Nearly Wednesday morning?
Almost Wednesday morning. I didn't prepare a PowerPoint because I figured your hundred-and-ten-page document that you got was probably enough, so we're required as an entitlement city for the City of Delray Beach with the federal government, we're required to do a five-year consolidated plan, and that five-year consolidated plan consists of an evaluation of our community, and how are we going to spend these CBDG dollars, what is the benefit to the community, and how are we aligning the dollars with unmet need, and based off of several different things, public activities, housing rehab, which is, um, what we currently have, and also partnering with CRA dollars and ship dollars to kinda, um, pull those dollars together to help the community. So the five-year plan is just that, it's what we project to do in the next five years, now, with that being said, does that mean that it's going to be the next five years, and it's gonna be exactly what we have in this plan? Not necessarily, so the reason why I say that, because included in this plan is the first year of the five-year plan, right, and so this year, for fiscal year twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, we're entitled, entitlement, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars is what we're getting in CBDG, now, hopefully, we will continue to get CBDG dollars, but as we go through this process every year, we wait for the entitlement allocation from HUD, so for this year, next fiscal year, we're proposing ninety-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars for Program Admin, the housing rehab program, the owner-occupied housing rehab, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, five hundred and sixty-four, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars for public service, and that's for our nonprofits, um, sixty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so that is the allocation that we're proposing for the first year of the five-year plan, um, we did have a couple of public meetings, one being here in City Hall, and we had a few people show up, not a lot, I would like to have a full house when we have these meetings, cause I think it's very valuable and important to have community input, in the back of your document, you will find that we did a survey monkey, survey monkey with, um, where folks can scan in, and then they can answer questions about what they would like to do, and the majority of the responses was housing rehab, and so we're in alignment with what the community is asking for, also, they wanted some work training programs, but for the first year, what we're proposing is to keep the funding in the, in the housing rehab programs, and the public service programs, with the caveat that we will work with the community moving forward for the second year, which will be twenty-six, twenty-seven, and if we need to do another needs assessment to see if there's something that we should be doing, and shift those dollars to a different type of programming based off of community need, so that is what you have in front of you, and I'm sorry, I don't have a big PowerPoint, but that's what it is, we have to then, should you approve it tonight, we will submit this to HUD by Friday, because that's the deadline to get, to get everything into HUD, so...
Okay.
I'm here to answer questions the best to my ability.
Okay, this is, but, are we, it's a public hearing, so there are any members of the, sorry, any members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please come to the lectern, give your name and address, you will each have three minutes, seeing none, public comment is closed, um, we don't need to vote on this then, or do we?
Oh, yes, you do, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well then I need a motion?
Please vote.
We can, we can discuss. Some discussion?
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
You were rushing me before, so I just figured...
I'm sorry, well, let's slow it down, let's slow it down, um, so, I, I'm a little, well, now, now I'm a little confused because I was a little disappointed in the, um, act, that, I didn't, the market, I saw that this was advertised in the Sun Sentinel, um, on July twelfth, I was not aware of this meeting, when we have meetings as important as this, when I reach out to the community, they show up, I, I, I did not know about this, and I am confused because I look at the first, um, survey that we have here, the twenty-twenty-four says forty-seven persons, was this a, a physical meeting, or was this the survey?
That was the survey, correct.
Alright, so, and then on the second one, for twenty-five, twenty-six, seven people.
Yes.
I, I just, I do not consider that public input, at, at, seven people, I just don't consider that public input, the first paragraph of this application says, "The City encourages participation by citizens of low and moderate-income neighborhoods in areas where these funds are proposed to be used," and consulting with the public housing, like, none of these people participated in this, in this plan, I, I just, I am just beside myself as to how are we gonna submit a plan when the public has not participated in this at all?
Understood, and, and I will, and I am in full agreement with you, um, when I took over this role, this planning process should have started a year ago, and for community assessment and community planning for the five-year plan, as well as submitting for the first year of the five-year plan, and I, and I'll be transparent with you, that was not done, it was not done, and so to your credit and to, to your comments, I have talked with some very key members of the community, and we've talked about this, and we've talked about, in the limited timeframe that we had, or I had, to, to submit this plan for you, um, moving forward into Plan Year Two, this planning has already started, um, so we can really do that community assessment, really take a look of what the unmet need is, and how can we bridge the CBDG dollars with those community unmet needs, and I, I am a hundred percent with you on that, because I was a little disappointed as well, that there was only a few people that showed up, but, to your point, it was advertised on the, on the city website, and it was advertised in the newspaper, but it wasn't advertised enough, and I agree with you.
So, so you're saying that this is, this is already in implementation status?
No, it is not, it's our current program, in the fiscal year that we're in now, the programming is the housing rehab, should you approve this tonight, then moving forward October one, it would continue in that housing rehab model that you have in front of you, and then in Year Two, between now and Year Two, between now and when I come to you next August, asking for approval on Year Two, we will be doing, have done, a community assessment.
Alright, so you have a deadline, and your deadline is?
Friday.
Fri, Friday?
Yes, ma'am.
And so if we, if this is not approved, what happens?
We don't get funding.
Oh, my.
Let me ask you, if, 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 so what you're saying is, we're gonna, we can, if we approve this now, we're gonna have an opportunity to amend Years Two, Three, Four, and Five?
Absolutely, there's always opportunity for amendment, so if, in this process, because we're not gonna really touch this funding for a few more months, and in this process, if we need to do an adjustment after HUD has approved it, then we're absolutely able to do that.
Yeah, cause my experience is, on these, on these, on these block grants, that there really is a much more citizen participation, and, you know, because it's, the, the, those recipients are the ones getting the, they're, they're getting the dollars, and they should have a lot to say about how they're, you know, how they're spent.
Absolutely, I'm in full agreement with you.
I don't wanna, I mean, my, my, my suggestion would be, that we, we, we decide now, that we're gonna undertake all of those meetings that you say that we should have done, so that's commencing in Year Two, that we don't lose it...
Year Two, so you don't lose funding for Year One.
That we're gonna be able to implement, so, you know, we'll get eighty percent of the, you know, of it covered with the new program that we're gonna have with, with citizen participation.
Yes, please, that's my ask.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine, I have, I have no choice.
Well, that's also...
Sometimes your back against the wall, you have to move, so...
Oh, my, my back's always against the wall, so that's...
So we have to do this in order to get the funds, and I'm not going to...
No, I know, we don't wanna lose the funds, but, but as long as the commitment is made that we're gonna have all those meetings, so that we can at least address that issue for the majority of the contract.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Should I make a motion to approve?
I haven't spoken yet.
Oh, I apologize, Rob.
Why was this brought to us the same week that the deadline for approval is?
Just as I said previously, that the plan had not been done, and the assessment had not been done, the community planning had not been done until June, when I started it, and so I apologize for the short notice, but that is the truth.
It was brought to my attention soon thereafter, at the very beginning of July, and got my arms around the fact that there is an August fifteenth deadline, so direction was offered to the Department of Neighborhood and Community Services to proceed us outline, and we are here, however, in addition to, I appreciate the ideas having just been generated in terms of amendment opportunity to create ancillary public participation and engagement, that will more than make up for that lost opportunity previously, so, in essence, there's not much of a choice in this regard, this is a mandatory requirement as a community development block grant entitlement community that we adhere accordingly, nevertheless, the ancillary direction was to begin the process well in advance, so by the time we offer recommendations to this effect, a year from now, we'll be in position to hopefully demonstrate a higher level of community participation and engagement.
Yeah, I mean, listen, we have to do this, obviously, our back's against the wall, as Deputy Vice Mayor Burns said, but procedurally, this, this is kind of a mess, to, to talk about a survey monkey with seven people, that, that's a joke, and then, I don't like having something brought to me, where it's like, you have to approve this, because the deadline is Friday, that's ridiculous, so, we need, I don't know, I don't care whose fault it is, it just needs to be handled better in the future.
Absolutely.
Whatever that process looks like.
Which we just summarized.
Let's just ensure that, that we as, as a commission aren't getting something where we're acting to a corner and we have no choice.
Of course.
It's just performative at that point, we, we have no choice, so obviously, I'm in favor of it, but the, the process is problematic, so, anyway.
No, I, I concur with Rob, I think that's fair. You, you, yeah, I mean, I, I do too. You, you, yeah, I mean, I, I do too, I think, I, I do understand that there was a lot of transitions in your department earlier in this year, so.
Just a few.
But, but I, I, I do think that Commissioner, Vice Mayor Long makes a good point in that these procedures need to be established notwithstanding who's sitting in, in, as department head of your department.
Absolutely.
So, I want to be able to ensure going forward that this is not, doesn't happen again because it's no fun being at your backs against the wall, so. But anyway, so we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Yeah.
That was my line.
I just want to throw it out.
Stealing my silence.
It just felt cool.
That's right.
It's late.
You always wanted to say that, I know.
I'm in need in hours.
Comments and inquiries on non-agenda items to the city manager first.
Yes, sir, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, briefly. A congratulations to the Department of Communications and the staff over at the Creative Arts School. They hosted this past Saturday afternoon, the First Annual Creative Arts and Culture Fest, in which agents from various artistic sectors of the community were able to participate, and it was an excellent experience because there were several hundred people in attendance, close to about four hundred people who converged at the Creative Arts School, which began at noon and it concluded about four o'clock. So, that's a very robust level of attendance and participation, and I did have an opportunity to walk over while I was engaged in my usual Saturday work here at City Hall to wish everybody well and participate and witness the experience, so, well done, congratulations. Secondly, the next Citizens Academy, we had one back in fall of twenty-twenty-four, so we're beginning again this coming Thursday, August fourteenth, over at the Delray Beach Municipal Golf Course, and we will actually rotate depending on the scope of the syllabi for presentations by various departments. So, the inaugural session for twenty-twenty-five will take place this coming Thursday, beginning in the late afternoon, early evening, six o'clock PM, over at the Delray Beach Municipal Golf Course, and that is fitting because of the direction you all offered earlier this evening relative to the golf course renovation and funding program. So, just thought I'd highlight those two outcomes for the betterment of the community, much appreciated, and thank you.
Can, can you, can I just ask, Mr. Moore, can you just give us a heads up when you would like some of us there or any of us specifically there? Because I, I went to those last year and they were great.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that, so, our interest is to work closely with Noemi to make sure that those opportunities are available on your calendar, so that you are aware of them, thereby, you would always be welcome. In the event that there are multiple elected officials planning to attend, of course, we would post accordingly, work with the office of the city clerk to make sure we're squared away in that regard. So, I, as well as members of the team, will appreciate knowing in advance if a number of elected officials plan on attending any community engagement or event because the office of the city clerk is pretty diligent about making sure we're covered in that regard as well.
It's an odd little thing, but the, the public notice is really easy, it just says more than one commissioner, maybe more than two commissioners may be in attendance. So, you really can't surprise them by showing up if you're, if, because if there was no notice, and you'd be the second one, so.
And one thought is to simply notice those accordingly in advance, in the event that there's.
Yeah, just give the notice.
An engagement, we make the notice happen, that way you don't have to be concerned. So, Madam City Clerk, if we can proceed along those lines, that will be helpful.
Done deal.
And I'll, I'll let Noemi know tomorrow about this, just so she's aware of it, and she's really good at all this.
Of course she is, yes, sir.
She's way better than any of us.
Otherwise, ladies and gentlemen, I yield at this time, and thank you.
Okay, to the city attorney, Commissioner Long.
All right, I have a, a quick statement I want to read. So, earlier, we voted on Resolution one seventy-two, twenty-five, to join a lawsuit challenging Senate Bill one eighty because it's a sweeping encroachment on our home rule. We, by doing that, were asserting rightly that the state should not dictate every detail of our local governance, especially when it comes to the character and values of our own community. So, that raises a question. When do we stand our ground and when do we surrender without even a conversation? So, on July twenty-third, it was announced that a decision was made administratively that our Pride intersection will be removed, quote-unquote, "in the coming days" in response to a Florida Department of Transportation memorandum about painted crosswalks. This was not a commission decision. We have not seen a formal enforcement letter from the Florida Department of Transportation. And other cities, like West Palm Beach, have negotiated solutions, including relocating their pride symbol before its removal. We have not done that. Beyond its symbolic weight to the LGBTQ-plus community, the Pride intersection has a practical benefit. Studies show that painted intersections significantly improve safety. A Bloomberg-funded asphalt art safety study across seventeen sites nationwide found a fifty percent reduction in crashes involving pedestrians or cyclists, and a thirty-seven percent drop in injury crashes, and a notable increase in drivers yielding to pedestrians. Let's be honest, we all know this is not about traffic safety. This is political, it's part of the same culture war climate, culture war climate, where symbols of inclusion are targeted precisely because they represent acceptance. It's about erasing the visibility of our LGBTQ-plus people at the same time when their rights are again under direct threat. Just this week, the U.S. Supreme Court was asked to overturn Obergefell versus Hodges, the landmark decision guaranteeing marriage equality in this country. We cannot pretend this is unrelated. Delray Beach has long prided itself on protecting and celebrating our marginalized communities. That's not just branding, it's part of our civic identity, symbols matter. They tell our residents, visitors, and especially our youth that they are seen, valued, and safe here. Removing our Pride intersection without commission consensus and without a plan to preserve that symbol elsewhere sends the wrong message at the wrong time. If we're going to comply with the FDOT's direction, we should do so after the FDOT issues a formal written directive to the city, and after we identify and approve a new prominent location for our pride symbol, as West Palm Beach did, that's the minimum respect that our community deserves. So, I'm asking for consensus tonight to halt any destruction of the Pride intersection until those conditions are met. Let's apply the same resolve we are showing in the SB one-ten lawsuit to this issue. If home rule matters, if our values matter, then we must defend them, not just in court, but right here on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mark. I don't have any further comments, Mayor. Commissioner Casal? Commissioner Burns?
Yes, so I wanted to also congratulate Gina and her team.
Oh, wait, we're not doing comments?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have comments.
That was a comment.
I apologize.
I did ask for consensus.
I, I, well, then you said you have no comments.
I said I have no comments.
I do have comments.
I'm sorry, you lost your chance.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood.
You're out.
No, that's not fair.
No, do, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So, first, I want to thank both our police and fire for the first day of school activities. The posts were amazing, I really appreciate it, and thank you very much. I also wanted to welcome our new recruits to the police department. We met them at, at the Run with the Chief, which was so much fun. One mile is very invigorating, I will say, in the morning. So, that was a great event, very enjoyable, and I'm excited these young recruits are coming on board with the city of Delray Beach. I was also going to congratulate Gina Carter, you took care of that, thank you very much, Mr. Moore. And we did already congratulate Mr. Hodge and Mary on that one hundred, one million recovered money, which is amazing from the, the deficit bills. Also, two gentlemen from Ocean Rescue received awards recently, John Livingston and Justice Katan, amazing lifeguards. They went to California to the U.S. Lifeguard Association Competition, and they brought home a trophy. And this is, I believe, the fourth year in a row, so congratulations, gentlemen, and congratulations to our amazing Ocean Rescue. Had to be a challenge in the waves, I saw some of the pictures, could not have been easy. Thank you to our clerk for always being on the ball and for the lovely snacks that we have because I know the clerk's office provides the water and snacks. I do appreciate that tremendously. I wanted to say Ms. Waldo was here, and she announced some things, but there's a group playing at the Arts Garage called The Kittens, two little young gentlemen, you maybe remember Mr. Markert, we met them when we were campaigning, the little boy following me on the bicycle asking all the questions.
I do remember that, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, you were campaigning?
Campaigning.
Campaigning, okay.
Yes, two lovely young boys.
You'd be a little scandal going on.
I did not say campaigning, I said campaigning. And they play in a band, excuse me, they play in a band, a jazz band with their dad, they are lovely, and they're very talented, so anybody who likes jazz, come to the Arts Garage on August fifteenth, I will be there. Also, Mayor, this is awkward, but I would like to say this. You sent out a series of public records requests to the DDA. I don't have any problem with the requests, I, it's totally fine, but my concern is you use the city's letterhead and when you sent them out, and I feel like if you're going to use the city's letterhead, I would like for you to consult with us so we can all be in agreement on that because first you use the city's letterhead, then you changed it to Mayor Tom Carney, then you just sent an email. I don't have any problem with you looking to see if the finances are in order. I appreciate anyone who's willing to take the time, it's over a hundred and three pages of information, and I've been going through some of it as well, but I would just like if you're going to be sending a letter to one of our partners on the letterhead, I would appreciate you consulting with us because I think when you send out something like that, it's coming from the city, it's like it's coming from the full commission. And I would just say that would be a courtesy, I'd appreciate, thank you.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes, thank you, so, as I was saying before I was so interrupted.
I didn't interrupt you, she, she barged back in.
I didn't say who interrupted me, I said before I was interrupted.
I was prepared to move.
Okay, so, again, Gina, great event at the, at the Creative Arts School, I enjoyed myself. The, the comedy show, the Children's Garden, all of it, it was great. Got to see two of my previous students playing in the, in the band, that was a great event. I appreciate you and all the work that you're doing for that. And also, I wanted to say congratulations to Inter Chief Hunter for the run. I don't know about that whole, I think I, I did a half mile, but anyway, it was invigorating. But it, it's a great event, and the new recruits, yeah, we got a chance to meet the new recruits, so, welcome to the city of Delray. Also, I wanted to be, I mean, we had several people speak in reference to this tonight, but I wanted to ask, I had a meeting with some of the Haitian leaders, and we were discussing landlords, absentee landlords. And also, I know that we have a couple of residents who had a burned house next to her, can't contact the landlord. We had another resident up here by Kason, the yard, just outrageous, can't, you know, contact the landlord. And then, Mr. Holder mentioned cannot contact the landlord, and I don't, Florida shuffle, first time I ever heard about that. That's a new one on me. But, you know, with the rapid increase of Airbnbs and the vacation rentals, I would like to get consensus from my colleagues to direct staff to draft some sort of ordinance requiring landlords to register their rental properties. I just think that it provides a database, a great database, and, and that we can get in contact with people. We have so many instances where we can't contact these people who owns these properties, and it goes not from just months, it goes into years. So, I would like to see some sort of ordinance drafted so that we can have these people register these rental properties.
There's a state statute that got rid of all these landlord permits and stuff like that.
Correct, I don't think Commissioner Burns is talking about a permit, it's more of a registration so that, for example, you know, we, the code enforcement gets a complaint about a party, you know, and it's late at night. If we have a registration, we actually have a point of contact for emergency purposes, and so, it's not a permit, they don't need it to operate, but it's just a registration within the city. I do think that, I, I think we can do that. We can't demand things like leases and things like that and copies, but it would be a registration.
But how do, how do we enforce it, Jessica, I mean, you have to.
Well, there would also be, you could also do it, we, we actually have a draft of this somewhere, we had gone over.
I thought we were doing this for the Airbnbs.
It's for everybody who's a landlord, but you could essentially require almost like an annual inspection. And so, because what, what's happening is with these vacation rentals, you're getting more people than the house can hold to stay in these places, and so, you know, the fire marshal or whoever in the city would be able to go as part of the registration, do an inspection, and ensure that, you know, the lights are working, the electricity is working, and it's a safe environment. So, but we do have a draft of it, it's, it's just never really got any traction.
Yep.
Okay.
We already got a draft.
All right.
What if people don't comply, though, when are we getting?
That's what I'm saying, I, I think.
It's like, you're, we're creating work for ourselves, and we're never going to be able to enforce it. If the police get called to a house right now, can't the police figure out who the owner is and figure out a way to get in touch with them?
Sometimes.
Well, they could have, you could, you could get a property address, but that doesn't mean you have a phone number or an email.
It's an LLC.
I just don't know that, I feel like it's a lot of work, we create an ordinance, we implement an ordinance, and we've got our staff out once a year at these houses, and I don't think we're necessarily going to be able to accomplish.
Well, that person brought up a good point because there's a lot of times where people are renting their houses that are still the owners, that are still getting their homestead exemption.
Yeah.
And that is a serious issue, that's cost everyone in this room money.
That's a big violation, though.
I think, I think we had bought software to start a database, but it just.
Right, because we talked about that.
Can we see what you have drafted up and then we decide that way to look at it, and, I mean, anyway, consider it. And then, I have one last thing.
Is there, do, do, does the commission want to see that, not as a first reading, but just as a discussion?
I'd like to know what we have in place.
Okay.
I don't think we have this one in place, I think it's just a draft.
Well, what they've done.
Yeah, okay, and then, the, speaking of city letterhead, I have a sorority who has been serving this community for thirty, forty years, maybe longer, and there are several organizations that ask me for welcome letters, that ask me for congratulatory letters, and I wanted to know, I have one from the, the AKAs, they're having an event, a cluster event where people from different states, different countries actually, are coming into an event that they're holding, and they want a welcome letter from me, and I wanted to know if there was, if I have consensus to have to use the city letterhead to, to write this welcome letter? Because my first line says, "On behalf of the city of Delray." If not, if it's a problem, then I can just say, "On behalf of Angela Burns," and do it on just regular piece of paper.
Well, I'm going to get to the letterhead comment because it was made, but we should have a policy that if commissioners want to write on an official thing, that, as I was required to do, because I did, I cleared everything with several, at several levels before I sent my letter.
To be clear, Mayor, you and I spoke, I spoke with the mayor about it.
I'm just saying, I think we should know.
Well.
Well, I, I, yeah, why?
Because it's a letter that's asking for things from this, it says from the city of Delray Beach.
Mayor, can I, well, we did tweak it, and we put it from the desk of Mayor.
That was, no, the first letter on the twenties was not, so.
After that was sent, I spoke with the mayor, and I think that's okay, I think each of you can have your own letterhead. You know, and I think what Commissioner Burns is making sure is that it's okay if she says, "On behalf of the city of Delray Beach, we thank you," or whatever.
Right, so, I mean, I, I cleared the first letter too, and then it was decided afterwards it would be better, so, it wasn't though I just sent it willy-nilly, I never do anything, I never do anything without getting clearance.
As a, as a colleague.
That's your opinion, that's fine, but I don't do anything without getting clearance first, so, anything. And I'm happy to document everything that I do because I'm very careful of what I do. So, anyway, are you finished?
I asked a question.
Well, I think we got a reply.
I think the answer was yes, based on.
So, it's okay?
So, we're going to have, but I think what we should, we need to do is to ask that we have individual letterhead created, so you have, you know, the Office of, of Rob Long, the Office of Tom Markert, the Office of, you know, just so that you have, if people want to send out letters. I'm not, I'm not, I was not trying to do it exclusively, but I did check to see if I could do it. I think that's a fine suggestion, and, you know, it, again, however you want, I mean, I wrote mine based on what, what I was trying to do with getting an FOIA request after repeated request, requests in writing to get the information, so. Anyway.
Thank you, got it.
Any other thing?
Just one other, just to piggyback on what you just said. In the letter that you're referring to, the mayor sent it because he's the mayor slash ex officio member, non-voting member of the DDA. So, I am of the opinion that he can use a letterhead because of that specific title. Nobody else on here shares a title of the ex officio member, and so.
I understand, I just think as a colleague, it would have been a courtesy, that's what I. I understand, I just think as a colleague, it would have been a courtesy, that's what I'm saying, I'm not saying it's against the rules, then.
I understand, I, I understand what you're saying, but I did.
Attorney Jalen, I'm saying it is a courtesy to your colleagues. When you're sending out something like that, it was a tad aggressive, I just want to say, I read it, and I just would like.
Well, I, I guess you didn't get the three, you didn't get the, the memo where I was.
The back and forth is disturbing to me, those are our partners, and I wish we could stop the back and forth, now Ms. Carter's getting requests, it's just getting out of control, that's all I'm saying.
Well, you know, if people comply with the first request, then there's never a second.
I wish you would just sit down with her and talk to her.
I write a letter.
I don't know why you can't just sit down and talk, but I just would say.
Because it's public information.
Listen, all I was saying is, I like a courtesy of a.
The executive director of the DDA sitting there saying, "Oh, come to my office and we'll discuss it," excuse me, it's public information.
It's not, I agree it's public information.
According to the sunshine, I'm sorry.
You just won't sit down with her or other people.
Other commissioners, other people on that board have asked for information, I am not alone in this request.
Right.
So if you, if you, if you don't, you can say, "Well, I'm all for transparency."
I make requests all the time, and I expect them, I'm, I don't disagree with you.
Apparently not, you're vouching for whatever they say.
I'm not vouching for anybody, I'm asking you to give us a courtesy.
Yeah, I, I read, because it said.
That's baloney, I didn't, I don't like people being attacked on assumptions before you even have the documentation.
Any other, any other, any other? Yeah, I mean, I brought up a consensus item and no one, no one just sort of pivoted away, didn't say anything. So, I assume I don't have consensus, since no one replied to my request for one. Is there any appetite at all to even discuss an alternative symbol for LGBTQ-plus community in Delray? In a park, a mural, something like what Wes Palm did?
Well, I would just say that I, I agree with you that we should not make any moves before we have something official.
That's all I'm asking, is that we.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not, if they have not given their official statement and directive, I would say that we're jumping the gun, if we're doing it already before we get something official. So I'm in agreement that when we get something, or if we get something official, at that time we make a move. So I'm for holding it until we get an official statement.
Yeah, I, I, I'm in agreement, till we know for sure, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we wait and play it out? And if we have to comply, we have to comply. And if we have to comply, maybe your suggestion, you know, is a good one, that we think about what Wes Palm did.
Thank you.
We can think about it, okay.
Well, I would thank the city manager for taking the initiative and, and not making us make a hard decision anyway, so thank you for that. Um, and can I miss one more thing, could we get an update, Mayor, on the sound ordinance? You and I discussed it briefly, but could you just do a two-minute thing in the next commission meeting for the residents? Because we do get a lot of calls on that.
I saw some traffic signals.
Yeah.
That measure sound.
Yes, a woman sent it to us.
It was a fascinating article, I forgot where they were using it, someplace in the Midwest.
Right.
I haven't, I can send it to you, I read it.
Yeah, it's a great art.
I have it.
One of our residents sent it to us, so it's on your, it's on the server.
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty cutting-edge.
Yeah, I thought it was a fascinating.
Just to give you the timeline, I, I was waiting because I was going to the municipal lawyers conference, and they were going to do a presentation.
You're always awake, going some time.
I'm telling you, so, there is, I, I do want to run it by an attorney, just to, um, make sure it's on our forge. I'm gonna do a workshop, sorry. Um, but we're gonna do a workshop, because I need to explain it, it's very technical, and it's, it's a lot of numbers. Sure, no.
We don't own our traffic license.
No, I understand that.
So I'm gonna do a workshop, um, we might even do something with the public, well, maybe we'll engage the DDA to, to bring the business owners so that everybody understands what we're doing.
Right.
And then after that, if everybody's comfortable with it, then I'll bring it forward for first or second meeting. This is another item that I think would be, would benefit from waiting till season starts, because I feel like it's, it gets noisier as the season progresses. And so that's what I'm waiting for, so in the interim, I'm gonna send it to the attorney, um, that I met. Just put another set of eyes on it, and then once I'm comfortable, then we'll start those processes. And obviously I will let you know when all those meetings are, so that you can let your constituents know.
Sounds good. Any other comments?
Close it up.
Thank you.